Six thirty-five on the twenty-second of April, two thousand and twenty-one. There are motions to open the meeting for the planning board.
Make a motion to open the meeting for the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. at six forty-five, we have a public hearing, but we don't, we can jack it up if we're here. Everybody here for New England Retail Development? Frank, you're all set?
So Chairman, I don't want Frank Montero. Would you like us to get started, or do you want to wait till quarter?
Um. I don't think we, uh, have to wait till six forty. Everybody here for New England Retail, for, against, above, or beyond, about?
No, Mickey Higgins isn't on yet, right? Mickey, you on out there somewhere?
Okay, we'll give him five minutes. Guys, I don't know if you had an opportunity to read the minutes from, give me one second here. Uh, regular minutes in public hearing, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I don't know if either of you gentlemen had an opportunity to read the minutes.
Yes, I did. I make, I make a motion to accept the minutes from March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Rick, aye. With that, minutes accepted. Okay, moving on slowly. I had some mail. Well, we have a few minutes. I got the ads. Jen, are you on, Jen? Okay, those, all those, uh, advertisements from Fairhaven Neighborhood News, we pass them on to the clientele, is that correct?
Yes. It was just the one.
Uh, I had one for Cyberview ten fifty-two Main Street. Is that the only one we had?
Five forty R Main Street for this time, I believe.
Yeah, these are the ones that we just add in. I have to sign these and send them to
Oh, it's the best, okay.
Perspective party. I have three of them.
I don't have them, so I have not forwarded them to anyone, so they will need to be forwarded.
Okay, we'll take care of that when we have our meeting. You and I will meet up sometime in the next day or two or three. I also have a few for South Coast Media that we have to straighten away. I don't know if you want this, Rick, Thompson Reuters, I don't think we have anything in the publishing, like, general, like, the laws, Rick. Mass General Law and NOV point-five chapters forty L to forty-one, city towns and districts.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, you know, typically, we're going to refer to town council. Anytime it's a legal issue, so I don't think we need that.
Okay, I don't think we have anything in the budget, so we'll take care of that. Had a few from different zoning boards, but there's nothing on the boards or nothing pertaining to us. We had Rochester Marion, Fairhaven, New Bedford. Just different challenges that they're having. While we're doing that, Pat, while you're here, how long will it take us to do that stormwater thing?
You would actually have to break out of this meeting and open the meeting of the stormwater review board, so that would take you some time.
Uh.
Is this, is it?
Go ahead.
I just, we'd have to ask Jen if she posted this as a stormwater review board meeting tonight.
No, we got, we added it on from, uh, hold on. I don't believe we did, because we didn't have a warrant on the fifteenth. We just added it on to this.
It was not posted separately.
Then we should do it at your May sixth meeting, Mark.
Okay, well.
Jen, we would need to post it for the, is it May sixth, Mark?
Uh, hold on one second. I think May sixth meeting for all the articles that are going to town warrant, so we can also post it as that. Uh, Jen, did you happen to talk to Pam today on those?
Yes, I did speak with Pam.
Okay, and all that stuff has to be in tomorrow, I believe, is that correct?
Yes, to the pay.
Okay, if you can get to her in the morning and repost the stormwater one for May, uh, May sixth, we will have it on that particular date also. Is that okay?
Yep, that should work.
Okay. Great, thank you. That takes care of that one. And John and I have you on May sixth. We will be doing one, two, three, four, five, six articles going on the warrant from the building expect, expector and zoning enforcement, so we have to do that. You could put that on your calendars. It'll be an early meeting. It shouldn't take us more than forty-five minutes, and we will add this. You want to do stormwater first, or is, uh, I'll have to do it last seven fifteen for stormwater. That's okay with that, Pat?
Yeah, there's a stormwater by law in there too, but that would go through on your by law meeting.
With that, it being six forty-two, do we have everybody here from, uh, New England Retail Development?
And Mr. Chairman, we do have Mickey Higgins, the applicant. Phil Lombardo is on the call, the applicant's attorney. Uh, myself, Frank Montero, I'm the site engineer representing the applicant with GPI. We also have Heather Monacup is our traffic engineer with GPI. Uh, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to share my screen with the board.
If you would please, thank you.
Okay, can you guys see that all right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, what now?
There we go.
Yep. Got it.
Technology awesome. So, um, as mentioned, Mr. Chairman, um, we were last there before the board on, uh, March eighteenth. Along discussion with board members, several of Butters made significant progress since that last meeting. Uh, we actually went to the zoning board on, uh, March twenty-third, and, uh, we had approvals granted for a special permit to have a convenience store larger than three thousand square feet. And we also got a variance, uh, regarding signage. So we've completed our, um, requisite approvals at the zoning board level. Um, since that meeting, the applicant, Mr. Higgins, has had a few continued discussions with the Butters. And I think we're in agreement on some changes to this plan, and I'll just highlight where we're at with those. On one of the main, main topics at, at the last meeting with the board, as well as the Butters, was trying to maintain the existing evergreen tree that's in this corner of the site here. Uh, northeast corner near Main Street. So this landscape plan has been revised to show that existing evergreen to remain. Um, secondarily, uh, Mr. Higgins had discussions with, um, Pat Liberty across the street regarding adding a couple of Bradford Calery pear trees on this side of the proposed convenience store along Main Street. Uh, those are deciduous trees, nice blooming, uh, blossoms and the sprangles of these very nice. Here. Mr. Higgins, I continue discussions with, um, Josh and Adelia DeRoches, uh, the neighbors to the north. And we, uh, agreed to change the species of the aravites that are planted along this whole property line here. Uh, those have been changed on a landscape plan to a green giant species, which was preferred by, um, Josh. Um, there was further discussions with, um, DeRoches regarding the loading zone, uh, that's on the side of the building. Um, and what Mr. Higgins agreed to do is install a cantilever gate, which is shown here at the front of the loading zone. And that gate would be locked, uh, from five P M. to seven A M. Um, every day, uh, basically prohibiting any loading activities from occurring in the loading zone behind the gate. Uh, so that's the intent of that, that gate. Um, those are the extent of the plan changes. Uh, we, as the, as the chairman knows, we've gone through an extensive review, uh, process with the peer reviewer, S W Cole. Um, we've had a series of review letters with, with those folks, the last one being dated April fifth. Um, we did send a final response letter to the chairman on April thirteenth, basically, uh, updating the, the, uh, response to comments through the process. At this point, we've addressed all of the, uh, comments, um, and forwarded that information to the board. Uh, if there's any desire to go through those in more detail, we can do that. Um, at the last hearing, the planning board had requested that the applicant prepare a gap study. There was some concerns about left turn movements, um, into and out of the driveways. Um, Heather has since completed that, and I'll have her, uh, present that momentarily. Um, Heather also had additional discussions with the, uh, police chief regarding the crosswalk situation. And we've got an updated plan to present to the board on that as well. Um, so Heather, if you'd like to, um, take it from here on the crosswalk, and/or the gap study, would be like to do it?
Yeah, we can, uh, we can start with the crosswalk location. I think that's the crosswalk locations, that's fine. So, uh, good evening, everyone. For the record, I'm Heather Monacup with GPI, and, um, as you know, our, at our last meeting, there was some discussion about some letters that came in about the crosswalk. The, uh, police chief had written a letter. We did an evaluation. The police chief wrote another letter saying that they would really, um, like to have not only the crosswalk across Main Street, but also along, um, across Wing Road. So on April seventh, uh, myself, Mr. Higgins, and Chief Christopher Richmond had a team's meeting, a virtual meeting, uh, to discuss the crosswalk location, um, our thoughts about it, what, you know, what would happen. Um, and on April eighth, a letter was submitted. Hopefully, that has been made it to everybody. Um, just basically, basically stating, uh, his concurrence about, um, the two pedestrian crossings. And from that meeting, um, and that letter, we have updated this plan that's in front of you. Um, so we now are showing not only the crosswalk across Main Street with the appropriate advanced warning signage, but also a crosswalk along, um, I'm sorry, across Wing Road. Um, and that's new on this plan since we showed, uh, last week. Frank, if you could zoom into, zoom into the sign summary, um, that, that last sign on the sign summary, we're proposing some, um, signage for that. That was a concern that we had had, and we talked about in our evaluation of whether or not, um, you know, turning vehicles would be able to see. So we're going to make sure that we have an advanced warning sign that shows that right-turning vehicles need to yield to pedestrians. I showed that sign to the police chief. He was, um, he was okay with that, so we'll be, um, you know, implementing those as part of the two crosswalk locations. Um, I just want to note that we still have to do field survey out there, so the absolute final location of these cross, uh, these crosswalk locations will be based on field survey and ADA requirements must be met. So, um, we will be coordinating any, uh, final design with the, uh, Department of Public Works Highway Department and, and the police office, uh, as well, if, as needed. So, um, that is the update on the crosswalks. I can move on to the gap study unless there's any questions on the crosswalk at this time?
Gentlemen on the board, any questions?
I'm all set. I did read the chief's letter, and he's satisfied that, uh, he's satisfied with the location of these crosswalks, and I'm sure that, uh, he will continue to work with the applicant to, uh, fine-tune the locations and the signage.
As needed. Perfect. That's great.
Brian, you all set?
Total agreement.
Great. If you would continue on.
Great. So the, um, at the last meeting, we were, um, requested to do a gap study out there. So we used the data that was contained in the trip generation and site access letter. Uh, we looked at the peak hours of traffic, um, out there, that's seven fifteen to eight fifteen, uh, A M., four to five P M. and twelve to one P M. on a Saturday. Um, what we looked at was both, not only left turns from the site, which need a gap in both northbound and southbound traffic on Main Street, but we also looked at, um, gaps for left turns into the site and right turns out of the site. Um, a passenger car needs six and a half seconds to make a turn from, um, from a stop to make a right turn out, and seven and a half seconds to make a left turn out from a stop. So what we did was we looked at the available gaps in traffic that were eight seconds or more. Um, that is displayed in this table in front of you. This is the summary. Um, when you do the math on this, there is, um, this, this site would use less than fifty percent of the available gaps in traffic. So, as you can see in the columns, um, I'll just take one example, um, during the weekday A M. peak, peak hour, um, for the northbound gaps in traffic. Uh, so that would be a left turn into the site or a right turn out. There's a hundred and forty-nine available gaps in traffic. We have sixty-six of those movements happening, so that's only, that's forty-four percent. Um, again, we could go through this whole table, but as you can see, all the numbers on the left, northbound and combined northbound and southbound gaps in traffic. Again, there's, um, other, there's lower gaps in traffic. These are only counting the gaps in traffic that are eight seconds or higher. So there is, um, adequate gaps in traffic to accommodate the anticipated traffic, um, entering and exiting the site. And that was, uh, provided in a letter dated, um, April seventh. So I'm not sure if there's any questions on that, um, but hopefully this information made it to you prior to the meeting.
I did, I did have a chance to look at the,
Okay.
at the letter, um, and it, it certainly seems like there should be plenty of, uh, available gaps to accommodate the traffic there. I was a little surprised at how many larger gaps there were. I didn't think, I, that was, uh, so I mean, even if, I mean, there are some of the gaps that you'll have two or three cars that, uh, are moving within that gap, so I, I, I don't really see that there should be any great problem here, especially without a, a drive-through. I'm satisfied with it.
Brian, you okay?
I'm okay.
Fine. You'd like to continue on?
That's all I have for traffic.
Mr. Chairman, that pretty much concludes our presentation on new data and information requested since our last hearing, and we'll just entertain any other questions the Butters may have for the board or the Butters at this point.
Is there anybody out there that would like to speak on behalf for or against? It seems that, uh, Mickey's been doing a good job. He's talked to all the neighbors. He's done everything they asked him to do. All the studies have been done. The police chief is happy. They just have to get to DBW as far as the crosswalks. Is there anything else, gentlemen, that you, you can think of, or is there anybody else out there who would like to speak on this project?
Mr. Senator?
Yes, sir.
Gary Hathaway.
Correct. Go right ahead, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, I do have, I have a couple of questions. That traffic study, uh, last time we talked about that there would not be a joint venture or a non-owned business in the store besides New England Farms. Is that still the intention?
Yeah, Mickey, you're here. You want to answer that?
Uh, yeah, Gary, I think having a co-tenant, you know, like a, I mean, I, I said from day one, Dunkin' Donuts was never interested, but, you know, a Mary Lou's Coffee or, you know, some type of franchise like that, that, that opportunity sort of ended when we, uh, conceded the, the drive-in, track, drive-through, excuse me. So, uh, there will be coffee offered, but it will be, um, made with our own employees, and there are no joint ventures planned currently.
Now, yeah, and, and that's fair enough. I just wanted to make sure, because the traffic study and all the information that was presented would be based upon, um, that, that condition. So my concern is, um, that is a, a good-sized operation. And what we don't want to have is, I don't want to have like a Dunkin' Donuts where it stacks up in that area and we cause traffic issues. Um, Mr. Ellis suggested at one time that we might want to consider a one-way in and a one-way out. I'm mainly concerned about traffic heading Main Street to make sure that it gets off the road quick. So if you, if I'm looking at the drawing, that, the first, uh, if I'm heading north, which I'm heading to Rochester, that, um, driveway in is perfect, because traffic will be getting, will be getting off that, uh, roadway really, really quick, and that won't lead to a backup. But if you look at the second one, we've got in and out, it's the cars that are going to be crossing on the outside going one way or the other. That could stack things up over there. And with a pretty good size of investment that Mr. Higgins is putting into this location, there is definitely going to be some traffic over here. And what we did learn from Dunkin' Donuts is to be careful about the way that we move traffic off of the Main Street, which doesn't help anybody. So I'm just kind of concerned, Mr. Ellis. Are you still considering that, or, um, what are your thoughts on that matter?
Well, I mean, again, when, when they, when you look at the, the traffic that's on Main Street and those available gaps, there should be plenty of time for people to go in and out there. That, because there's no drive-through here, I mean, most of the problem with Dunkin' Donuts is the cars are stacking up to wait to get through the drive-through, and, and that's, that's not a good situation, but they do not have a drive-through here. Uh, you know, most of their traffic will come in and park or come in and go to the, the fueling stations, uh, and leave. I honestly, I, I don't have a problem with the way the thing is, uh, the way the thing sits right here, especially with the relatively big number of large gaps that are going to be available even during evening. So I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied with the traffic situation, to be quite honest with you.
Okay.
Did anybody else like to speak on anything? Gary, you all set?
Yeah, I, I, all I can do is, is, uh, thank you, Mark. All I can do is address my concern, and I hope it works the way that we all hope it does, because I'd hate to see a backup in that area, that's all.
That's no problem. I, I think that Mickey has bent over backwards to make everything work, to make this whole project work. He's dealt with the neighbors, dealt with us, dealt with the police chief, fire chief, everybody's, he's had to deal with. Everybody is happy. In the beginning, there were many complaints, and now everybody seems to be happy. Is anybody seeing the same thing?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm very satisfied that the applicant's been very attentive to, uh, the, the concerns that the neighbors and, and the board has had. Um, you know, the other thing, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but the other thing that's different about the Dunkin' Donuts is there definitely are not the available gaps in traffic on, by Dunkin' Donuts. There's, there's, there must be twice the number of traffic, two or three times the amount of traffic on that section of Main Street. Uh, other, you know, there's a pause to where this place is. So this place has got really less traffic, more available gaps, and no drive-through. They're also going to put a couple of crosswalks in to hopefully convince the pedestrians to, uh, cross in, uh, those locations. I, 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 again, I'm just, I'm very satisfied with, with the traffic situation here, and thankful for them working with the neighbors on the, on the screening. Uh, I mean, the only thing that was in the S W Cole letter, uh, was verbiage related to infiltration, uh, basins on, on this particular site. In, in the past, there was one subdivision that was done that had a low point in the road, and the only drainage available was an infiltr, was a set of infiltration bases. And quite honestly, uh, they, once or twice a year, those infiltration basins got overwhelmed, created a big, a big pond at that low spot, and prevented people from getting to and from their, their, their houses. That's kind of the reason why the planning board has not been, uh, real fond of, of drainage that relies solely on infiltration. This site does not do that. I mean, the infiltration is basically put there as, as a, not a concession, but to, can, to address uh, the new stormwater, uh, regulations that, uh, we're dealing with these days, trying to reduce the amount of runoff from the site and, and do some form of, of treatment of the runoff before it enters the drainage system. So I'm satisfied with that also. Uh, you know, I, I've I'm in full favor of going forward with the proposal as presented tonight by the, by the applicant.
Ryan, you have anything you'd like to say?
Oh, I'm, I can only say that I'm, I like the fact that everybody seems to have been, uh, everybody's been made happy by the situation. The neighbors, all the departments, everyone. So in my book, I think this should go forward.
Frank, this will be the, the last drawing. Do we have to have any more drawings that we have to sign? Or do you have to tweak this one up, or this is it?
Uh, this, this is the final plan, but it's the one sheet, so, um, I don't know if you use Stein sheets, or do you reference plans for your approval? Like, for instance, if you wanted to reference this site plan, the last revision on it is, is today, April twenty-second, twenty-first, which, where we added that gate that we referenced. So if you wanted to reference a site plan, you could do it by, by, by date. Uh, and we could certainly get this plan to you and.
Oh, that's fine. There's, there's nothing else you have to tweak up? This will be the final one?
As far as I know, unless, unless the board wants something else.
Nope. Rick and Brian, are you satisfied?
To try and make it go forward here. Um, I mean, ultimately, the, the approval should reference all of the plans, uh, that, that are currently proposed. Uh, I don't think we absolutely have to do that tonight. I would, I would say that I would move, we approve, uh, the submission for site plan approval, uh, as presented tonight, uh, by New England, New England Development. Is that correct?
And New England Retail Development.
New England Retail Development, uh, with the latest revision on the site plan of, and I can't read it, whatever the, whatever the latest revision date is.
By April twenty-second.
April twenty-second. I, and the remainder of the fourteen plans, uh, would be part of that, uh, approval also. The only thing that I would add is that, obviously, we would appreciate it if they would continue to work with the police chief, uh, on the crosswalk situation. Other than that, I would move for approval of the site plan, uh, as presented tonight.
Frank, you can do all that?
Absolutely.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, uh, Mark, if you and Pat could get together and, and, you know, basically list, get a list of all Okay, Mark, if you and Pat could get together and, and, you know, basically list, get a list of all the, the plans that we're approving and put it in the form of a letter to the, I take guess to the ZBA. I don't know, or to New England Retail Development.
I believe the ZBA has approved everything.
Okay.
They finalized everything. They're just waiting for signatures and I believe there is a 20-day appeal period. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we, we had the decision signed and we received the decision from the zoning board. And there is a 20-day appeal period.
Mr. Chairman? Just for the record, the plan that you're approving tonight is dated February 3rd, 2021. I wouldn't, I know the revision date is, is the 22nd, but this plan says February 3rd. And I wouldn't want someone to dispute the record saying that this plan got substituted. So.
I'm sorry, this is Phil in Bardo. If I can, if I can earn my keep, what I, I might suggest is you refer to the plan as being dated February of 2020, comma, last revised, April 22, 2021.
That would be February 3rd, 2021.
Excuse me, yeah, la- last revised.
Yes.
April 22nd, comma, 2021.
That works.
Can you handle that, Frank?
Yep.
So we have a motion.
Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, but before we bring this to a motion, for, for the record, my name is Joshua DeRoche, speaking on behalf of my wife, Odilia. We are the abutting property at 168 Main Street in Acushnet. First of all, I, I do want to thank the applicant for working with us. They've been very thoughtful and, and understanding our needs and, and as well as addressing them. I think what, what I question, and it's, it's hard to see the design, but you know, I think I would just request that everything is in writing, what, what we have agreed to. For example, like the, the Green Giants, it's hard to, it may actually reflect on, on the, the landscape planning. However, I just can't see it due to the print. It looks like it's small. I'm not sure if, if the landscaping has been updated to include the changes.
I can, I can address that, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, Josh, I do have that landscape plan here. I just put up on the screen and I highlighted the changes so you could clearly see them. Let me try to blow this up, but up at the top here, can you read that?
I can. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And I appreciate it. Mickey actually sent me this, this drawing. However, where it was highlighted in, in the, the description of the plant, it actually blocked out the, the wording. So now that I can see it, I, I actually have the same drawing. It was just unfortunately blacked out. So and my, my other question would be, we, we did times. Is that something that would be reflected as far as, you know, deliveries not being between seven to five?
Yeah. Could you see this note right here?
Okay, very good. That's the other thing I can see that was blacked out. I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. The existing evergreen tree here is noted to remain. The two calorie pears are here. This, this node corresponds to the table up top.
All right. And, and again, these are the ones that Mr. Higgins sent me. It was just blacked out where the highlighting was. So I can certainly see that and I appreciate it being documented. I thank you for that. I, I think my wife and I are very happy. I, I think the only concern would be, you know, moving forward. You know, I, I know we, we talk about the drive-through, not having the drive-through solving a lot of our problems specifically with traffic as well as disturbance to the butters. So I guess my question at this point, you know, would pretty much be one of my final questions is moving forward, is this pretty much put an end to the drive-through? Or is it something that we're going to run into in the future? Because if it's something that we're going to run into the future, then I, I think that, you know, there may be a little more concern about the traffic.
Well, right, right now, right now, the drive-through is not in allowed use in this zone. So that doesn't stop them from, from trying to request a variance from the ZBA, but at this point, it's, it's, it's dead. And if they were to try and resurrect it, it would be another ZBA meeting. You would be noticed and you would have the, the ability to talk about it at that point. But as far as this proposal goes, and this facility right now, it's a dead issue.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. And again, we thank you, Mr. Higgins, as, as well as the applicants for, for working with us. And you know, he's also, you know, let us know if there's issues in, in the future that we're free to contact him and we can work this out. So again, we're, we're excited to get things moving along. We're going to be happy that it's going to clean up the corner of Acushnet and I'll look forward to continue working with Mr. Higgins and his team, you know, to come up with solutions if we run into something in, in the future. So thank you. And I thank the board as well for their time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank, you can put all that aspect together, put that landscaping in with that one, maybe a second page?
That, that's, that's part of, that will be part of the list of plans that go on this letter of approval.
All right. Yeah, we'll have every sheet in the set updated to reflect these changes. These are the two sheets that are already completed, which I've shown you. But we'll give you a complete set of, of all the sheets with a cover sheet for your record.
Rick, are we going to have to have a signing block on this? You're going to have to register this to registry of deeds. Am I correct?
No, I don't think so. This is only a site plan review. I think, I think an approval letter with the, with this plans listed should be more than adequate.
With that?
I mean, we should have obviously one complete set of plans for us and one complete set of plans for the applicant. I mean, if they, if they want the, the first sheet signed, that's, that's fine with me. But again, as long as the letter references each one of the plans, then I, I think we're all set.
I believe we'll have to have a set of plans also for the town clerk.
So three complete sets of plans and then we'll have to, to draft the letter and make sure all those plans are included.
Someone want to speak?
It's Patty. Maybe on the approval letter, we could list the special conditions so that you don't have to refer to the plans. I, I don't mind taking the time to spell that out in the approval letter.
Fantastic. So we have a motion. We have a second.
Got a second.
All in favor? Rick? Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
With that, this project is approved and we'll move forward.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. Thank you.
All of you too.
With that, moving on, the continuation of a public hearing, proposed ground-mounted solar array, five megawatt located at 52 Morris's Lane, known as Acushnet assesses map 17 lot 24 and 24B and 24C for Borrego Solar Systems Incorporated, represented by Brandon Smith of Borrego Solar Systems Incorporated, Lowell, Mass. 01851. The case file is available for viewing at the town clerk's office by appointment only. Do we have anybody from 52 Morris's Lane or Borrego?
Yes. Good evening. Brandon Smith. All right. So yeah, thanks for the time tonight. Just recap the project since the, the last meeting. At our last meeting, there were a few outstanding items that we've been working on. I'll just kind of go through each one. Prior to the March meeting, we had submitted documentation for requesting for the stormwater management permit. That was being reviewed by S W Coal. They have reviewed that and issued a letter on April 12th. And we have responded to those comments and submitted revised plans addressing the, there were only three outstanding items on their letter. We've submitted revised plans dated April 14th to the board. Hopefully that made it to the, the board members. Really, I can actually, it's, they're short enough that I could probably address them real quick. The three comments that the, the S W Coal had, really the first one was basically an observation that the, that the project does meet the requirements of the Acushnet stormwater regulations. The second comment was regarding removal of erosion control measures at the end of the project to make sure that no silt that had been trapped by the erosion control measures, you know, once you remove the, the measures, it doesn't just end up into wetlands or anything like that. So we have made revisions to Sheet C 4.0, the grading and erosion control sheet of, of the plans that were submitted to the board to address the proper removal of those erosion controls as well as some edits to the details of those erosion controls. The last comment S W Coal had on stormwater was just to ensure that it was documented in our long-term pollution prevention plan that no herbicides, no chemical herbicides will be used on site, which, which is in fact true. We will not be using any chemical herbicides on site. So we, we added that language into the long-term pollution prevention plan to, to make sure it's clear and resubmitted that document, which is Appendix C of the stormwater report. So those, those changes to the plans, I believe have addressed the, you know, all the outstanding comments by S W Coal. The other changes that we discuss, or that we've made based on last, the feedback from last meeting was a traffic management plan. I believe the board requested that we add some language identifying that we will be working with the police department, that they'll be notified and coordinated with for, during construction, specifically for deliveries and construction traffic along Morris's Lane. So we've added that we've revised the traffic management plan in the plan set with that language to make sure that that, you know, we'll be working with the, number one, we'll be notifying the police department prior to any construction and we'll be working with them to, during construction to manage that traffic. The final changes or the final kind of topic of changes that we've made is we were working with Mr. Hannan to ensure that the plans meet the Acushnet Fire Department requirements. We have added a 1,500, I think prior, we had a 500 gallon cistern for water onsite. We've upped that to 1,500 gallons based on feedback from, from Mr. Hannan as regarding the fire department requirement. So there'll be 1,500 gallon cistern located south of the, the, kind of the southeast equipment pad. So we've located that in the plans. We've also identified that the battery, there are the energy storage units will have 24/7 monitoring with an alarm that will be basically compatible with alerting the fire department for, you know, in an emergency situation. And then other than that, I think the, the other common or the other layout designs that we had on the plan, Mr. Mr. Hannan reviewed those against the requirements and has, you know, provided a positive feedback that, that they, that the plans meet those fire department requirements. I think that, that really covers it. I think most of the changes were, you know, notations. So I didn't share my, my, my screen here, but you know, if there are any other questions or anything like that, I'd be happy to, to bring the plans up and answer any other outstanding questions.
Do we have, is there an acceptable number for the decommissioning cost?
Yep, that was reviewed by S W Coal actually kind of prior to, they did it in two, two chunks. So that, that has been reviewed and we have, you know, we're, we're, we accept that their, their number that they came out with. I can, actually I have that up here. The number that they review was, let's see here. I believe that, that was provided to the board prior to last, the March meeting, actually. So I believe we've already reviewed.
Okay, as long as there's an acceptable number to S W Coal, then, then I'm happy with it. I mean, we have, we've got five or six of these proposals going on right now. And, you know, I, I can't keep them straight.
That makes two of us. Maybe three of us.
Yes.
We, we do have a, a standard set of special conditions that go with these projects. I mean, it would seem that the only additional one that we would have is that the, the applicant will notify the chief of police when construction traffic is going to occur relative to delivery of materials or or trucking wood products, stumps, lumber, et cetera, off the site. That, that would be, that would seem that the only, that's the only additional special condition that we should have here is, is a condition relative to that. Other than that, I mean, the, the stormwater has been reviewed, you know, it, it, it seems like we're ready to approve this project.
Can I make a suggestion, Rick?
Sure.
There's a lot of concern about traffic. So if they could notify me about their kickoff meeting, I'd like to attend their kickoff meeting for the project, just to make sure they don't miss anything that the board was concerned about.
Sure. I mean, I would think notify both yourself and the fire and the police chief.
Yeah.
I mean, he's, he's the one that, that really needs to be tuned in to when the high traffic episodes or high trucking traffic episodes are going to happen up and down Morris's Lane.
I don't know. Did I give you guys the letter from the police chief? General considerations for solar farm projects. Could I hand that out to everybody?
I don't know. Let's see. That one, I think I've got it, but I don't know that I've read that.
Well, give me 30 seconds and I'll read this one. Maybe it might take a minute. General consideration for solar farm projects from the police chief, Christopher Richmond. After reviewing the plans for a number of proposed solar projects over the past year, I submit the following general considerations for similar projects going forward. Proactive steps should be taken to secure equipment, tools and materials during the construction phase. Based on a similar projects in town, theft from indoor trespassing on the site can sometimes be an issue. Properly securing valuable items and posting appropriate no trespassing signage will hopefully prevent these issues, but will also assist the police in doing what needs to be done in the situation warrants. The police and fire department should be provided with a 24-hour point of contact for the project in the event that there are issues that require immediate attention during the construction phase. Once the project is done, an updated 24-hour emergency point of contact should be provided to public safety departments as well. Special attention should be given to avoid construction as well as delivery of equipment and materials during off hours. This will, will reduce or prevent potential noise nuisance complaints by neighbors. Once fencing is installed and presumably locked, the police and/or fire department be given access rights. In an onsite alarm, if an onsite alarm is installed, will it be audible only, remotely motioned, or both? A past solar project had an alarm active during the construction phase and resulted in numerous false alarms. This is unnecessary committed public safety resources to remote part of the town needlessly. My hope is to avoid this same issue. The above reflected consideration for the construction of solar projects is general. As always, I am available and will be and willing to review any specific plans, especially those with unique aspects. Please do not hesitate to reach out at any time respectfully, Chris Richmond, chief of police. With that, we do have thirty one articles. We always put on these solar farms. Is there anything else that anybody would like to say pro con? Is there anybody out there from the public that would like to say anything? With that, gentlemen, do we need a motion to move this forward?
I would make the motion that we move to assemble a set of special conditions relative to this project for approval.
Is there a second? All in favor, Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
With that, Pat, you would be the man that will be helping these gentlemen along with this?
It'd be my pleasure.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate the time tonight. I did have one other question just regarding the stormwater management permit. Is that a a sec separate vote, separate permit? That would be issued or is that, I guess, I I just want to, you know, some documentation of that that that's been reviewed and we've met those requirements as well.
Is that on your table, Pat?
Well, if Merrily doesn't want to weigh in, I can. I mean, I I know it was approved by peer review. I don't know what Merrily wants to do about physically issuing a permit. Or we know it went through peer review. We know the response was positive. We know they met the requirements. So I see Merrily just took off her her mic. You got something, Merrily?
Well, I I just wanted to say we don't, we don't have a specific permit form as of yet. That was some something we need to work on with the regulation.
So I can put, I can put it in the conditions letter that it was approved.
That would be.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
There'll be a record of it until we actually have a permit form from town council to issue.
That'd be great. I appreciate it.
You got it.
All right. Thanks. Thanks for the time tonight. Have a good evening.
We'll be in contact as we continue on with this forward. It being, oh, my goodness, seven twenty seven. All care and continuation proposed for ground mounted array at fourteen dash forty seven Park Drive. I'm sorry, can't pronounce the name. Sin Sin Capria.
Incarfa.
Park Drive, excuse me. I'm sorry, didn't you were muted, sir?
Sir. That's in Carla.
Sin Capra, I apologize for screwing that up. Of New York, New York, represented by applicants engineer Weston and Sampson of Reading, Mass. This proposal is for a five megawatt AC ground mounted solar array. Case file is available for viewing at the town's clerk's office by appointment only. If you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself, sir?
Yes, I'm the Kowski from Weston Sampson.
And do you have something you'd like to show us?
I can just run through, I think there were three main outstanding items from the last meeting that we have. One of them was the peer review of the stormwater plan by SW coal. So we did receive comments back. And we respond to those comments. They were pretty minor in nature, nothing significant there. I did share with with Pat Han and the responses that we had, and he's seen those comments that SW coal came up with. One of the board members at the last meeting requested that we speak to the police chief. So I spoke with Chris Richmond last week and he didn't really have any major concerns as far as the volume of traffic goes. But because of the neighborhood configuration, he did request that deliveries come in from the west so that they'd make their way basically off route eighteen to Randall Road and then eventually into Park Drive. So that that was his main request based on my conversation. And then I think the last piece was the butter on the west side of the proposed access road had spoke up last week and he had requested that a fence be put up along that property line there. And Annie Jung is on the line from Sincarfa as well, but I I believe Annie has had conversations with that a butter and they've agreed to install that fence.
Hi, this is Angie Jung from Sincarfa. Yeah, yeah, that's right. Sincarfa has offered to put up a fence about ninety five feet along the access road. A vinyl fence after construction and during construction, we can put up a fence also with some mesh lining so that we can prevent debris from going over to the butter's property.
So you have a informal fence in the beginning, and then whenever the project is over, you will will put up the fence of that gentleman's choice?
Correct, yeah.
Will that go the full length of his property? Is that what is that what it is, the fence?
Yeah, up until there is, I believe, when we spoke up until there's like trees in the back. So I I think it's about ninety five feet along the road.
Gentlemen, any other questions?
Now, I believe that because of the interesting route to get to this site from the main roads. It it might be appropriate to actually do some some temporary signage during construction to help the trucks find their way to the site, you know, through parks, through those lefts and rights through Park Drive. That way you don't have vehicles going the wrong way, trying to turn around where it's difficult to turn around. I I think that that might be a a good idea. Particularly when you're having most of your materials delivered and or materials that are leaving the site from land clearing. Is that something that?
That's something, Rob, that you could do?
I'll defer to Annie on that one. Like, I don't see why not.
Yeah, I I think I think that's something we can definitely do.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna be, we're gonna be dealing with a bunch of people that really don't know how to get to the site. And I'd be honest with you, I've been down there a couple of times and I I still managed to take a wrong turn or two to to get down there.
So if we could request signage in and out, make it easier for both of both.
Yeah, to get to get people out to the main, the main traffic road that they that they're going to use. In this case, the chief would like them to come from route eighteen. That I think that would help things considerably.
Work zone.
Construction vehicle route, something like that.
Sure.
Are any other pros and cons? Anybody like to speak on this for or against?
Hi, Mark. It's, hi, Mark, can you hear me?
Yes, who is this, sir?
This is Mark Moore. I'm I'm the abut that Annie Chung was speaking about, the property that abuts the accessway.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I just wanted to talk to Annie that I received her email this afternoon about my concerns and I will be replying to her and I appreciate that she's willing to put up the fence before, during and after construction. But I just wanted to let her know that I reviewed the email and I'll be replying to her about some concerns. Well, not concerns, but issues that she raised in her email. That was it.
No problem at all. Did you get that, ma'am?
Yeah, I did. Thank you, Mark.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Annie. I appreciate it.
Everybody seems to be happy. Gentlemen, is there a motion to continue? Was there a decommissioning on this already, Rob? I can't remember.
Yeah, I can speak on that. We do have an approved decommissioning quote from our potential EPC vendor. And I can submit that to the board along with the narrative.
Okay, that typically review from SW call.
Yeah, typically would have that reviewed by SW call.
Uh, yeah, we can send that over to them for review as well, then.
Okay.
That wasn't explicitly requested, but I'm happy to do that.
Could I get a copy of that as well? This is bad, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So we can't move forward until we have that, Mike. Is that correct?
That is correct. Till we make out all the paperwork.
This would have to be a continuation.
Would it? Would it be possible to condition the approval on SW calls confirmation of the decommissioning bond estimate?
Sure. I think it shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, I mean, typically, we would, we would next go to a a draft set of special conditions. We would try to incorporate the the requests of the the fire chief would put the special condition in about the construction traffic routing and, you know, I guess, as long as we have a also.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else you gentlemen can think of?
No, I I would make, I would make a motion that we have a draft set of special conditions drawn up for review and and hopefully approval at the at the next meeting.
Is there a motion for that?
I second that.
All in favor, Rick?
Aye.
Brian? Mark? Aye. With that, Rob, you'll take that. Rob and Annie, you'll take care of all that stuff for us?
And if Pat, if you could, you know, kind of work with Rob and Annie on that draft special conditions, it would be good to have that just ready to sign at the next meeting, if possible.
Yeah, not a problem at all.
Okay.
With that.
We need a motion to continue to our next meeting.
I think our next meeting will be May twentieth. Is that okay with all you folks? That's the last Thursday in May.
Yeah, that's fine with me. Take your time and.
Working on that. So we still have to do all the paperwork for New England Realty at the next meeting, right? We need all their paperwork so we can sign that. Is that correct?
We'll need a, we'll leave a a letter or an approval letter for them.
So we'll put New England retail on at six forty five. And we will put fifty two Morris's Lane at seven. Seven fifteen, we'll put on fourteen forty seven Park Drive.
Sounds good. Motion to continue to hear, motion to continue the hearing to May twentieth.
I second that.
All in favor, Rick?
Aye.
Brian? Mark? Aye. With that, we will continue that at seven fifteen on May twentieth.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, folks. I think we're catching up here. What do we got? Seven thirty eight? Seven thirty. Continuation proposed solar array ten fifty two Main Street Woodridge Renewables LLC applicant represented by Steve Giosa of SciTech Incorporated Dartmouth. The case file is available for viewing in the town clerk's office by appointment only. Anybody from SciTech out there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Steve Giosa with SciTech and with me tonight is Alan Clapp, who is representing the applicant this evening. So this is a solar project that is located at ten fifty two Main Street, but extends over to Cushing Lane. And if I, if if it helps the board, I can share my screen. Just bring you up to date on what we've done since the last meeting and then.
If you would, please.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna go to the so this is the subject project. Again, it is the official address of the property is ten fifty two Main Street, but we're again at the far east end of the property adjacent to Cushing Lane. And at the last meeting, we ran through an overview of the project, which you see here before you, where we have access that originates on Cushing Lane, which is just off the if we can shrink this a little, yeah. We have Cushing Lane just off the plan here, and then it accesses the site in this fashion. And after the last meeting, we did have the plan circulated to SW Cole, the peer review consultant for the planning board. So they could look at the overall submittal and and provide us with some direction on this particular site. And we did get a comment letter back last week from SW Cole. And that comment letter had basically a couple of very minor recommendations for modifications to the plan. And we also, at the same time, incorporated one of the changes that the conservation commission had suggested when we appeared before them a couple of months ago now. So I just want to highlight what those changes are, so the board has a feel for it. The first comment from Cole had to do with the drainage system. And again, looking at this plan, north is to the top of the drawing on the western edge, we have a detention area with a piped overflow going to the wetlands. And then we have an emergency spillway to handle flows over the one hundred year event. And that flow would come down to the well. And so what we've done is provided SW Cole with an explanation of how the system works. This land to the west of the project is all owned by the applicant, the owner of the property. And so this discharge is continuing flow that naturally comes down in this direction enters this main well and system and will continue down gradient. In the event that a hundred year event is exceeded, which would be really be more than seven inches of rainfall in a day, but assuming that happens, that overflow would come here. And because of the natural topography, it would direct the runoff again onto the applicant's property and then down gradient. So that was one area they just wanted a summary of how that would work and make sure that we're mirroring existing conditions, which in this case we do. Conservation had asked us to take the lowest elevation within detention pond and create a little crush stone base that would promote recharge in this area. So we did, in fact, add a little crush stone area at the sump location at the outlet point of the basin. And that's again, in keeping with what conservation requested that we provide. On the opposite end, we did the same thing with the crush stone sump. So again, kept the the same methodology controlling that element of the project. And we also explained in our response to SW Cold, the same elements, we have a discharge point onto the applicant's property. The natural flow of water, there's a ridge point right here. And the natural flow of water is down to this corner of the land. Because it eventually overflows and goes on to a budding property, which every runoff flow would do, we wanted to make sure that it created a sort of a similar situation as existing. So at the direction of coal, we did create what's called a level spreader. Basically, a berm that's made of concrete that would run along this edge and the water that does find its way through our drainage system would then be distributed over a broader area. And when you look at the the topography, that broader area is where the runoff goes today. You follow the natural topography and all of this water back up to the midpoint, then down here and over all congregates under existing conditions right in this corner. And so we're mirroring that condition with our modification to the design. That was the the first set of comments from Cole, basically had to do with those two portions of the project. They made a note about freeboard and some of the basins, particularly these. Uh, they made a note about freeboard and some of the basins, particularly this, this section of the basins here, when this basin uh, surcharges in the 100-year event, there would be a little bit of water sitting underneath the rack in this location. Uh, but it's not enough to come up to the bottom of the, uh, modules themselves. And in fact, this is a fairly, um, regular way of setting these so we can conserve land area and maximize our production. Uh, it works well for the system because we're talking about an infrequent, uh, temporary inundation and also uh, at the end of the day, all of the electrical components are above the ground. The only thing touching the ground surface in that area would be the, um, rack itself, the, the support structure for the rack. So, uh, we answered that particular question, um, for, uh, Cole. And then finally, uh, they did have a question about adding a, uh, notation to our erosion sedimentation control plan that would, um, indicate that we would remove accumulated sediment from our silt fence erosion barrier. So during construction, we will install and maintain an erosion barrier along the eastern edge of the project and along the western edge of the project. Um, as construction progresses, this will be trapping any overland sediment. Prior to the removal, uh, we put, added a note to the plan that the sediments will be removed in the area stabilized before again, the fencing is physically removed from the site. And that'll keep any of that accumulated sediment from flushing out either onto an abutting property or into the, uh, adjacent wetland. Uh, finally, in terms of changes to the plan, actually two more changes. Um, the fire department, uh, Chief Gallagher had requested a fire cistern. So we've actually, because this is jointly being developed with the adjacent, uh, the next project on your agenda, uh, we did, uh, install or propose the installation of a cistern, a fire cistern down in this location. Uh, the size and location has been accepted by the fire chief. Um, and then also, at the last meeting, we did have some comments from one of our neighbors. And the drawing to regenerate, here we go. Um, we did add, uh, in the area where we were clearing close to the property line and near where we have utility poles being installed, uh, a row of evergreens that would create, um, a barrier in this location. Um, so we did in fact add some plantings to the plan. And we've maintained a no cut zone on this side of the property, um, which again, was an area of concern. So we are not removing that vegetation right to the boundary line here. And then when we do get close, we have added some plantings. So, uh, those are the only changes that, um, we were requested to make at this point. Um, and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Gentlemen on the board?
That the fire chief has asked for, uh, a ring road around all these, uh, solar panels on, on other projects. Pat, do you know if he's, if he's made any comment relative to having a drive around the outside of all of this?
Actually, after this project was in last month, I sent an email to the fire chief, um, basically asking if he had waived that 360-degree road for this project. That resulted in myself and the chairman and I think Jim Merritt and the fire chief meeting. And we hammered out a, a policy on that. And it's a 14-foot, 360-degree, um, gravel road.
Okay, so that, this, this plan, this plan needs to reflect that.
It does.
Okay. And the other question I had, if you could go back to the, uh, the drainage sheet?
Sure.
On the north easterly corner of the site where you've got that small, uh, sump basin?
Yes.
Now, it looks like the, the natural drainage flow is to a, what looks like a low point on an adjacent property. Well, what, what happens to the drainage now before you do anything? I'm assuming it goes down to that low spot. Is there, is that like the ultimate low spot of the area? I mean, is there?
No, this is actually, yeah, no, there's actually a drainage swale that runs along this edge here, comes all the way down and continues through. So that's, that's where the natural, uh, drainage currently flows. So all the water from this land comes down, gets intercepted by this little swell and then continues down this way.
That runs all the way out.
Where does it, where does it go once it leaves the, the property?
It, it continues.
Once it gets to this hundred, this elevation 100, uh, low spot, where does it go from there?
It, it continues in this direction down towards Robinson Road.
Is there some kind of natural drainage path right now?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm assuming that the drainage calculations are going to show that there's no increase in, in, in runoff, uh, on that corner of the property.
Yeah, our, our calculations indicate a slight decrease in, uh, all of the storm events, the two, the 10, the 100-year event.
Okay. We wouldn't want to create any, any big ponds that weren't there before.
Of course.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Pat, you also with this?
I'm good. Um, can we go with the ivy plant?
Now, was this, this was a site that was, it was mostly field? Is it ours a treat?
This, this is a treat site. The other, the next project is, is a, the, the project that's mostly field.
That's mostly field. Okay. Well, I mean that, I mean the same, the same comment that we have on, on the other solar arrays, you know, when they're trucking, uh, forest products off of the site, the police chief needs to be notified, you know, and, and there needs to be some, some respect shown to, uh, the neighboring properties. We don't need, uh, chip trucks barreling down that, uh, that section of the road, uh, with, with no concern for others.
I believe this whole project goes down Cushing Lane. Is that correct?
That is correct.
While I have you, and I forgot to say this to all the other people. From now on, when you guys send any paperwork in, it has to be in the Friday before the meeting. I wasn't able to get the product you had sent stuff in yesterday, I believe, Steve. And it wasn't able to be time stamped and me to hand it out to the guys. So from this point forward, any materials have to be sent to the planning board on the Friday prior to the meeting on Thursday. If you could pass it on to your group, I'd appreciate it. That's my fault.
And can you, uh, can we provide the fire, the police chief's letter, uh, to this proponent also? I think we need to do that for every, every one of these solar arrays in front of us now. He's mostly concerned that, you know, if there's a problem on the site, he needs to have somebody he can call that's got, uh, you know, that can address whatever problems there are out there. Whether it's nuisance calls for the, for the, uh, police department or some other problem that, that the neighbor is, is having or a traffic problem out there with the trucks. There needs to be a representative available, uh, 24 hours a day, really. They need somebody to call if there's a real problem.
I think.
And, and, but just if we could provide them that police chief letter, uh, I think that would take care of, uh.
Well, what I'm saying is there was a bunch of stuff that we had out that Pat and the billing inspector and the fire chief put together. We can add this letter to the letter from the fire chief from all applicants. Now they're applying for solar arrays. You can work something like that out, Pat?
Yes, I was thinking that.
Okay, and with you?
On the trucks too, for Rick.
What's that?
I have a suggestion on the trucks as well.
Sure, sure. I mean, I'm, uh, it's, it's just an open thing right now. I, I.
Yeah.
I, I guess it's, for me, where I am, I have a real problem with delivery trucks. You know, the delivery truck drivers, they want to get to and from where they're going as fast as absolutely possible. And it can, it can, it can border on the dangerous, uh, sometimes.
So, so there's a lot of trucks in town. And to not have the applicant be burdened with truck complaints, I would recommend that we come up with a placard that their trucks have on their dashboard. It's a bright colored card. And it might just have the initials of the street or something so that you could tell the neighbors if they see a truck. You look for that hot pink placard on the dashboard and you'll know it's their truck. I, I did it for a big dig job where I had 200 trucks a day coming into the town of Chelmsford. And it, it worked really well because they're gonna try and blame them for every truck in town. So every, every bad driver will be coming from their project.
I think, I think that makes a lot of sense. It also makes the driver aware that there's a notice right on the front of the truck that there's going to be a call and it's going to be directed, uh, to him.
Yeah.
At some point.
And, and they could give them the truck route and writing and all of those things. And everybody knows what they're doing. So.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep.
Well, Senator, anybody else that would like to say anything? Pro con?
I'll make a motion that we continue the meeting till May 20th. Uh, this will give the applicant some time to update his plans. Uh, and hopefully we can move forward at that time. Doesn't seem like we're quite there yet.
And if I may ask, it sounds like the only question is creating an actual 14-foot gravel path around the array. Is that the, the change that it sounds like you're looking for us to, uh, incorporate?
Yes. Is that the only thing, Pat?
Yeah, and I don't know if the decommissioning plan was peer reviewed. Is that all set, Steve?
It, it did go into, uh, SW Cole as part of the package that they did review.
All right.
I know SW Cole is overwhelmed with the amount of solar arrays we have, just like we are overwhelmed.
If, if you could just give SW Cole a call, Pat, and make sure that they are in agreement with the decommissioning costs.
I will. I know he's on vacation this week, but I'll, I'll, I'll reach out.
I mean, we've got till the 20th anyway.
So I need to be continued till 7:30 on May 20th for 1052 Main. We don't have to make a motion on that, do we?
I did. I, I didn't, I didn't give you a time, but I, I made a motion that we continue it to May 20th.
Zero second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. With that, we'll see you folks next month.
Okay.
7:40. How are we doing here for time today? We're doing pretty good. 7:57, 7:45, not bad. Public hearing continuation proposed solar array of Cushing Lane and Cushinget. Assesses map seven lot 26, White's Farm, Inc. Apiclin represented by Steve Giosa of SciTech Dartmouth, Mass. The case file is available for viewing in the town clerk's office by appointment only. Guess you're up again, Steve.
Very good. Uh, again, for the record, Steve Giosa with SciTech and Alan Clapp is also here on behalf of, uh, Cushing Solar. Uh, I'll share my screen again, and I have a couple of exhibits here, uh, to put forward. Let's see if we get rid of this. Okay. One of the, and I should have probably brought this out for the first hearing that we just discussed, but, um, this shows the two projects that we're discussing, the, the uh, Woodbridge Solar, which is this one here, which was just reviewed. And now this is the one that occupies the White's Farm land, the predominantly field here at the end of Cushing Lane, Cushing Lane here to the north. And this is the subject parcel in the subject solar array that we're talking about at this time. Um, so SW Cole asked us to put the exhibit together, which we have submitted to the board and to SW Cole, just to see the two projects, uh, side by side. So again, it's a, I think a little better understanding of what we are proposing here.
If that first project is 1052 Main, correct?
That is correct. So this one, this project goes all the way out to Main Street. Um, and so here's the frontage on the 1052 Main project. This is the rear portion and the access out to Cushing. And then this is the subject parcel that we're talking about on this hearing, uh, located a little bit further to the rear. So Cushing Solar, um, a little bit bigger project, but very similar in scope. Um, again, located at the, uh, south end of Cushing Lane. And, um, access in this case would again be off Cushing Lane into the project. And then we've created an access path, uh, onto the site. As with the previous project, um, we are locating that fire cistern here. And in talking to the fire chief, having the single larger cistern locate in this location would provide uh, emergency water access for both this project and the Woodbridge project, uh, over to the west. So we've got access coming in and around up to here. And again, we've maintained an open path, which is well in excess of 14 feet around the perimeter of the site coming through and over. We are not showing specifically a gravel surface. Uh, but you know, we'll talk about that when I, I'm sure you'll have your comments on that going forward. Uh, but SW Cole did review this. Um, as I said, they, they asked for the exhibit plan. And they really only had two additional comments on this particular project. One was the similar to the last project. They wanted some language um, added to the plan to reflect the maintenance of the erosion barrier. And in this case, the erosion barrier runs, uh, along this edge of the project. Um, that at the end, before the barrier is removed, that we remove any sediment and stabilize the area. So we have in fact added that uh, notation to the plan. Uh, additionally, what they asked for is, um, we have a drainage swale proposed directing runoff from the Cushing Lane area along our north boundary of the property and then down to the wetland system. Uh, they asked that we designate that in a easement area. And so we have in fact added an easement, a 30-foot wide easement to the plan. And that easement would be created, assuming this project is approved with a recordable plan. Would go on record at the registry that would memorialize this easement, uh, prior to the start of any construction. So we have agreed to the easement, um, and that would again occupy this strip of land and cover our drainage flow from the Cushing Lane area. And then finally, we did add, uh, landscape plantings on the outside of the enclosure, the outside of the fence for the project uh, in this area, uh, again, because our closest residential neighbor occupies this parcel here to the north. And we felt that this would be a good buffer, even though they did not attend the last meeting. Uh, we think it's, uh, a, a nice addition to have to the plan. So we did, uh, incorporate that onto the drawing. And this little bigger drawing, you can see here's the cistern being located here, which again, the fire chief, uh, has said is comfortable with. So those are the extent of the changes. Again, not very many. And, um, with the exception of how you want to treat that perimeter rooting around the site, we do have, uh, in excess of 14 feet everywhere, but, um, uh, we'll defer to the board on that particular issue.
The fire, the fire chief wants a 14-foot stone road around internally around the whole array.
Okay. I mean, also, the other, the other consideration too, where this is a field right now, uh, we, we really wouldn't want the fire apparatus getting stuck. So, uh, you know, it may require a little bit more than, than two inches of gravel or crushed stone over, over the outside. And it's certainly going to have to be something that's stable in all seasons, uh, so that the fire department can get their equipment, uh, around the site.
No, it's a good point and we'll, we'll provide a cross-section of that, um, on, on the plan.
Is the, um, fire cistern 1500 gallons?
No, actually, um, I had gone with a 3,500 gallons fire cistern in this case, um, again, because we're looking at it, as taking care of the two projects. Um, and we looked at the standard tank cistern sizes and we, we had jumped pretty, in pretty consistent gaps. So we went to the 3,500 gallon in this case.
Okay, that's, that's more than he's asking for. So that's fine.
Now, now, refresh my memory now on, it, it is a field, uh, in terms of, I mean, you're just going to work with the existing grades as they are now and, and put some type of foundation under. put some type of foundation underneath these things. I mean, I'm it. I guess what I'm getting at is, is there going to be any mass removal of loam off the site? That would create a that trucking situation.
No, we're going to, um, obviously, in any areas where we're building access drives and obviously it's with this perimeter requirement, we'll be removing some soils here and replacing it with some compacted gravel and then the the crushed stone surface as the chief is looking for. Uh, but the remainder of the site, we're not making any changes. And that material that we 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 would be removing and then replacing with, um, some gravel and crushed stone. Because we're not looking to make any grade changes on the site, we would not be looking to truck that material offsite. We would just reposition it on the property. There's a nice gradual slope through here. Uh, there's a little bit of a ditch in the middle of the field, which would get cleaned up and we'd use some of that material there. So no, we don't anticipate any earth actually being taken off either one of these sites.
Okay. So they'll have to, I mean, obviously, there will be some not clearing of the site, but up there. So it's going to be earth and then you're going to have to revegetate it with something. Is that the?
Yeah, we have a, yeah, we have a very specific seed mix specified on the plan. Uh, so yeah, there'll be some minor, obviously, in coming through here and and doing all the activities. There'll be some disruption of the existing surface, and then it'll get restabilized uh, and then completely seeded with the the seed mix that we do have a a very specific specification on for this this project.
Okay.
One other thing I didn't mention in the presentation, I I forgot. We go back to this issue of Cushing Lane, and if you remember that subdivision that never, they couldn't find after it had been signed years ago. We would like to get that cleaned up as part of this project, if possible, at the next meeting. We did have Romanelli generate that new mile lot that duplicated the original subdivision plan that got lost, that was previously endorsed. So we would be asking if the board would consider signing that at the next meeting as well.
Well, I would, I would request that you get that new plan and the existing plan to Pat, so that he can look it over in detail and give us a recommendation at the next meeting.
Sure. Yeah, we, uh, we did provide both at one point, but I will get it over to Pat, definitely.
I mean, we'll, we'll be asking him if he looked it over and if it is, in fact, exactly the same as what was previously approved.
Yeah, and and what I can do, if you'd like, the the mile hour, obviously, that we'd like to have signed, will eventually need to make its way to the town hall. It might be easier if we give him the mile hour at this time, along with a print of the original plan. When you lay the mile hour over the original plan, it makes it so much easier to see that all the language lines up and there's no changes to the information that was previously approved.
That would be marvelous.
Okay.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Ryan? Anybody else? Neil would like to speak on this pro con? With that, is there a motion to continue this till?
May twentieth. So moved.
Seven forty five P M.
So it's good.
And again, all documentation has to be in the Friday before the Thursday meeting. So all documentation for this will have to be in by May fourteen.
Thank you.
It would, it would be great if SW call again will agree on the decommissioning costs ahead of time. In time for that meeting.
Yeah, they they did receive that with our package.
I'll follow up on that, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
With that, thank you. We're doing pretty good today. Eight oh nine. Public hearing continuation Form B preliminary subdivision plan for six lot development at three oh one Perry Hill Road for Mark Francois, represented by David DeVignan, P E Schneider, DeBoni. That matter poised predates subdivision control regulations. The way is a gravel roadway available with between fourteen and twenty feet. And currently services three homes. Case file is available for viewing at the town clerk's office by appointment only. Do we have anybody from three oh one Perry Hill Road?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Dave DeVignan here representing. Also with me is attorney Richard Burke and Mark Francois, the property owner. May I screen share?
Please.
Okay, so we've been discussing this subdivision for some time now, and at the last public hearing, we left it. Uh, board members wanted to think about two options that we discussed, which was a five lot layout. In which we would pay a lot. And, um, we're here this evening to request the board to vote to approve the four lot gravel road concept, one lot being the existing house that exists. So this concept would be no increase in lots that exist from today. Um, as you are fully aware, there's a three retreat lots that exist um, on paper, um, on the assessive maps that have existed for some time, like seventeen, eighteen years or something of that nature. We realized that at the last hearing that the the butter at the end of the ancient way has an issue with the pavement. Um, so in order to make, uh, Mr. Dean Francois to the south happy, we are doing it all on, uh, Mr. Mark Francois's property. And in order to, uh, eliminate issues with the the property owner to the rear, we're simply going to propose to build twenty four wide gravel road as we previously previously discussed. So uh, with that, we're be happy answering questions. We're looking to get a positive vote of the board of this preliminary plan so that we can move into a more definitive stage. Thank you.
Gentlemen on the board.
Um, you know, I I'm looking at this one very much like what happened at Perry Hill on Perry, I'm out Perry Hill on Peckham Road. You know, we had some retreat lots. There were zoning issues relative to setbacks uh, and and access, which is again, similar to this property. We had three lots there before that should have, well, should have or could have been developed as retreat lots. I think this is perfectly reasonable proposal. Uh, there were four lots on Peckham Road. There are four lots here. There were three retreat lots that we granted subdivision waivers to get around uh, some poorly written uh, zoning regulations. I think that that would, that this property falls into the same, the same situation. I don't think we would be creating anything new, uh, that we will, uh, as a board regret later doing. I mean, again, we're, we're looking at some subdivision waivers to be done in lieu of retreat lots with with driveways or common driveway. I I I like this proposal. I I'm, I don't know how the other board members feel about it.
I feel the same way. You're not changing the current. This is what it currently is. It's just reconfigured, that's all. So to me, it this would be fine.
With that, this will be a private way. Is that correct?
That's correct. The plans.
So all, all the owners will have to maintain the road and bring the trash out to Perry Hill, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, there will be a homeowners association set up, and they will be responsible for upkeep of the road for plowing of snow and for trash pickup and whatnot.
Is there anybody else out there who would like to speak for or against this project?
Yes, I would, Mr. Chairman. My name is Attorney Chris Saunders, seven hundred Pleasant Street, New Bedford, Mass. I represent Maria Amro, trustee of the Macedo Realty Trust. Her property is located at three oh nine Perry Hill Road in the Kushner. That is the property that is located at the very end of this site plan where the gravel cul-de-sac is located. Uh, my client just has some concerns. The first is, well, it's more my concern than hers, is on the plan, it's referred to as an ancient way along this property. While I have not done a full title search on this property, I did look at the plan that's presented tonight. Uh, where it is referred to as a thirty foot ancient way, it refers to a plan book and page recorded at Bristol County S D Registry of Deeds. That plan was recorded in nineteen ninety four, and it refers to an easement, not an ancient way, that was recorded in nineteen eighty four. So I don't know how that constitutes an ancient way. But, um, there may be more information that I'm aware of at this point, but based on that plan, I dispute that that's number one, an ancient way. But that's not more of our contention at this point. It's more of my clients have an active farm at the end of this proposed subdivision. And my client's brother brings in heavy machinery, large trucks uh, throughout various times of the day. And I'm, we, while we possess easement rights over the easement way, not the ancient way that's presently laid out. The proposed, we have concerns. And I did speak to the proponents attorney, and they did make a concession to make it a a gravel way as opposed to a paved way. Because the heavy machinery, we had a concern that our machinery would be disrupting the paved way. Uh, but where the present easement way traverses the new proposed way, we're concerned based at that, that choke hole there, that that bottleneck that there is a a safety concern. If we have heavy machinery coming up the easement way and there are vehicles coming up the new proposed gravel way, that is certainly a safety concern of ours. And I don't know if there's any way to have that reconfigured uh, for safety reasons. Those would be our only concerns.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Right ahead.
Uh, we could propose stop sign, uh, prior to the intersection on our way. So as vehicles are approaching Perry Hill Road, approaching the intersection from Perry Hill Road, we can put a stop sign in there. So clearly, the, uh, the folks that you represent can have the the right of way with, you know, unimpeded, if you will. As far as the legalities of the ancient way and whatnot, Mr. Mr. Burke knows all about that, uh, in depth.
I I believe that was a determination way back when. Am I correct?
That's correct. That was, it was determined to be an ancient way back when the the land that his clients own was developed. Um, there was a Form C subdivision done for the cul-de-sac, which created built the ball for what we call trips away. Um, and it was, uh, it was presumed to be adequate, uh, to to provide access from Perry Hill Road to trips way. Um, but it it almost becomes, the thirty foot wide way becomes irrelevant because, uh, we fully intend to, you know, keep it unimpeded for them to use it. We're going to be improving the way which they use from current width to twenty feet. So there's no negative drawback to this proposal for that, uh, budding property, as far as I'm concerned.
And and Mr. Chairman, I was only highlighting that it it's referenced on the plan as ancient way with a plan book and page, which which makes it if if the layman looks at it and says, oh, it's an ancient way because there's a plan book and page. Well, lo and behold, that plan book and page. Um, I was still in high school at the time. So while I can sometimes consider myself an ancient, I don't think that is an ancient way based on that deed reference that's on the plan. And I was merely pointing that out. In terms of putting up a stop sign, I think that's, that's a good idea, but with any private way, it is unenforceable by the town of, uh, of a Krishna or the state police. So if people see a stop sign that is unenforceable, it essentially becomes unenforceable. And if nobody, the reason we have stop signs is so because people stop, and if they don't stop, they receive a citation. Nobody will receive a citation if they go through that stop sign. And the more and more people go through a stop sign that is unenforceable, it becomes a safety hazard.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Attorney Mark Deschays representing, uh, Dean Francois.
Right ahead.
Um, I I would like to echo, uh, both concerns of Mr. Saunders. When he has pointed to the current reference at the Bristol Southern Registry of Deeds regarding the layout of the, um, the the right of way, um, to the uh, trips way or the Macedo property. As previously stated, based upon my research, going back to the plans at the Leventhal Library at the Boston Public Library, their collections, this, this is just not an ancient way. And the opinion profit by Jonathan Eichman basically indicated that he needed to do more research. I think the the assertion that it's been vetted that it is an ancient way is inaccurate. Um, leaving that aside, we also echo, um, the very, very serious concerns we have. If you will, at that pinch point, uh, probably about five, seven hundred feet from Perry Hill Road. Uh, when, when, uh, individuals are traversing, um, on the gravel way, um, the, just the intrinsic layout of the plan as proposed at where it crosses over into Mr. Francois's property. A traffic sign, as Attorney Saunders says, is not going to do much. Uh, someone who wants to go towards, um, towards a cushion is going to come crossover. It's, it's lined up such that it's, it's basically almost invites you to cross over, uh, the three new houses cross over. And, um, there's, there's Mr. Francois Dean and his brother that will be using it. And you have the folks from the Macedo farm. That is an intrinsic safety risk. People going towards, um, a cushion, it are going to basically want to go there because they don't want to go down the end where you got people going in two directions. So we have concerns, one about that pinch point located maybe five, seven hundred feet up where uh, the gravel driveway just invites people, um, the three people, uh, on the, on the new lots. Um, and then another point we have a concern with is right on Perry Hill Road, within fifty feet, you have two roads, um, exiting onto Perry Hill Road. If someone happens from lot number two to come down in a westerly direct, uh, southerly direction, but wants to go to a cushion it, but the other one made a wrong turn and wants to go to Westwood, you got cars that are going to collide right there. You got, uh, it's not even, it's not even a, a a a city block wide. It's probably less than a hundred feet between two, two roads dumping onto a heavily traveled east west road known as Prairie Hill. So those are our two, two concerns. One is the, um, the, the two, two places that have potential safety hazards where the plan is drawn. One being about seven hundred feet up where, um, individuals traveling in a southerly direction will traverse onto our land to Perry Hill. Some may go the other way. And at that point, right at Perry Hill, you got cars coming out, and this is going to basically bring in, um, three times as much travel as there is presently. There it's, there's two safety concerns that have to be addressed with this plan.
With that, I need two minutes to ask the guys on the board. I have a public hearing for five forty, uh, Main Street for a solo. Uh, do we have those people? Are they on tonight right now? Uh do we have those people? Are they on tonight right now? With that, we'll just continue on then. I just wanted to note that we had an eight fifteen public hearing for that. I'm sorry. Say it again, please, sir.
Yeah, here representing five forty R.
Okay, I'm just we're running a little late. I just want you to understand that, sir.
No problem. Understood.
Thank you very much. You may continue on, gentlemen. There's two roads coming out on Perry Hill. Is that it? Is that what the challenge is?
Well, uh it's it's the two points. One is the um. Uh uh the confluence of the gravel driveway crossing over um onto. The the influence of those two streets where they cross over about seven hundred feet uh northwest way. Of Perry Hill and then um just the fact that these two roads, uh these two. The new layout, the new roadway layout and the existing gravel way are basically gonna put cars. At a conflict point probably within seventy-five or a hundred feet of one another.
Mister Chairman, the area is wide open. Um. It it's not like there's any obstacles preventing anybody from driving parallel to the other road and seeing. Who's there and who's not and and as far as uh. You know, the the traffic that we're talking about very little uh uh generation of traffic here. We're talking about three new homes. Um so I don't think it warrants uh concerns relative to the separation between the two roads. Uh it's no different than what you. See when you have retreat lots side by side and they all have singular driveways um or common driveway coming out. Uh right next to another driveway. Um we're talking about very few homes here. Uh. I I just I'm of the opinion it's being overstated. And again, it's it's wide open where the two roads meet and currently there's a. The backwards plan going on right now where Francois's leave and they come to the Y intersection. They have to look left. To make sure their cars are not coming too fast from um from from the farm. Um so it's just just the reverse of what's going on now.
But Mister Chairman, you're going to have new tr- new cars traveling there. You're going to have invitees. Coming to these new houses that aren't familiar with this present roadway. They're not pre- they're not familiar with heavy machinery, heavy heavy farm machinery coming down on this road. And I'm just pointing out that could be an issue. You have a seventeen year old kid. Coming now to lot number three to visit his girlfriend and he's trying to get up there. He sees that stop sign. He knows he doesn't have to stop. He's going to go. Lo and behold, there's a ten wheeler truck coming down the road. That could be an issue. And the and you don't find that on every new subdivision coming into a Kushner or any town around here. You have. You have a working farm at the end of this road and that is a recipe for disaster.
Around us for a while, guys. Do you have any comments for these gentlemen?
Um it it seems like there's there's never going to be a uh a good agreement between parties for whatever happens out here. I mean, we are talking about. Four or five houses. It's not. It's not like there's a twenty or thirty lot subdivision uh that that we're talking about here. But we have many places in town where we've got driveways close together. But it it's. I I I don't see there being a tremendous amount of traffic. Mister. You're also you're also you're also talking about people that live there that traverse the plate, traverse the road daily. Uh I think it needs a little bit of of consideration from both sides, whether it be slow moving farmer equipment. Or or guys looking to see their girlfriend at night, uh in in terms of that interception. I. I I don't see it as being some tremendous uh safety issue myself because of the number of residences involved. The the fact of whether it's an ancient way or not is is irrelevant. I mean, that's been beat to death by by lawyers before. Uh along with the recommendation that uh from our town council that we look at a a form. A Form C subdivision uh which is what's in front of us now. Uh you know, there were previously three retreat lots here that would have made four driveways going out to the front. Uh which would be even worse than the situation we've got right now uh proposed to us. Uh that's just that's just my feeling. I mean, we're all going to have our own. Our own uh opinions and ideas relative to this. Excuse me, that's mine. I still look at this as a reasonable, a reasonable uh. Proposal to to put an additional three lots back there. Probably better than having three retreat lots with three separate uh driveways for each one of them. That's.
Mister Ellis, I would just like to make a point. This is Mark Deshaies again. On the very first iteration of this plan. Mister um DeVignan basically proposed at that crossover, that Y point. It was to be, it was the first plan that was presented probably two and a half months ago. Was to basically have an abreviated edges there that would basically. Keep the people on the roadway that left north to south to Perry Hill and just basically eliminate. That was a very, very simple fix. Um that would allow Mister Mister Francois uh Mark to to access his house as he has. Uh over his brother's property, but it would eliminate the confluence of as I will agree with. Uh Chris Saunders, because believe it or not, I was seventeen years old at one point in time. It may be three houses. But most houses uh. Basically have three to four cars nowadays. It it it's not just a simple number. It's the number of vehicles that are going to be generated. And. There's the invitees and everyone else. The very simple solution is to basically take that Y out. And basically have Abba Vitie that people are directed in one place rather than a co- crossover point. That will cause uh potential safety concerns.
Excuse me. I I I understand what you're saying, you know, it. If the people at the end are happy with that, I mean, right now, they do have the right to access along that old way. There's there's no question in my mind about that. I mean, that was created. Before I was born, you know, to access that piece of land in the back. Um if they're willing and if they're willing to not have that access available and. If the current proponent is willing to let them utilize the new uh twenty foot wide gravel way, that's fine with me. But uh I I don't see that. The board can tell somebody that they can't have access uh to the historical. Path to get to and from their their lot in in the back.
Excuse me, uh this is Mark Francois. Um just to cut. Now I I did. In the back and I asked them if they wanted to use the new road, that I would put a a row of Abrevities there to. Separate the uh traffic. Uh that was my first thought and I thought it was a great idea. I approached them and said, you can, you know, welcome to use the new driveway. I'd put a row of Abrevities. That way there'd be no merging. And they for a unknown reason, they are adamant that they want to continue to use. Their road, their easement. Um I can't argue that. If they want to continue to use their easement, they can. Um you know, starting off from their house, going over my property and then crossing over my brother's property onto Perry Hill Road. If that's what they want to do, I can't stop them, but I have invited them to continue on the new road. I put a row of Abrevities. It would eliminate the problem. But and they haven't given me a reason why they don't want to use my new road. They just say they want to continue on their easement.
I I again, yes, sitting I not to not to stop you, but I mean, from. From the planning board perspective and considering the history of this old way that we've. Uh been living with for the last few last uh. Last bunch of years, actually. I mean, we we can't tell them that they can't access their road. If they if they want to use that access way, you know, from now until. The wh- whenever, I mean, they certainly are welcome to do that. You know, like likewise, you, you know, Mister Francois, you've got your own piece of property. You're certainly entitled. To to utilize uh your property as you see fit to. Uh I I'm just going to say. In my opinion. Four lots is not a major amount of traffic. I mean, I. I've been through, I don't know, countless subdivisions in town, twenty, thirty, forty lots. And most of the time, there's not much traffic going on there. I if 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 the. If you guys want to come up with a traffic study, meaning Mister Deshaie and and the neighbor in the back. That shows that that is a a a burden on Perry Hill. Or a burden on that particular intersection. I mean, I'm certainly willing to to look at, listen to it. And look at whatever traffic uh engineer you get to uh to to move that. Idea forward. Honestly, I don't see much traffic there. I don't see anything as long as that, as long as that intersection is kept. Uh open, free and clear with good sight, with good sighting. There's there's. I I don't. I just don't see a problem there. I really don't. You know, we're not talking about a major amount of trap.
Anybody else on the board? Brian?
No.
You all set?
I agree with Rick.
With that, do we need a motion? I know, gentlemen, uh. Is there other than the pros and cons that we talked about? Is there anybody else that would like to speak? With that. Is there a motion to continue on with this plan with?
Well, I would I would make a motion that we we approve this as a form, a Form B subdivision uh plan. Now keeping in mind that. Approval of this plan or disapproval of this plan really has no no bearing on what would happen when he comes in with his final plans. There may be other issues that. That me that we may want to consider, but again, I I would make a motion that we approve. Uh this Form B subdivision plan uh as presented uh and look forward to uh submission of a of a final plan.
There is second.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
With that unanimous.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome. We will continue this on till you're going to come in with the uh Form B, David. Is that correct?
A Form C. We'll come in. Yes, we'll come in the Form C. I would estimate in a few months, two months.
Okay.
So you don't want anything next month? Is that correct?
That that's correct. We won't be ready for for next month.
Okay, and then, you know, on this final plan, you'll have to formalize whatever you have to do for storm drainage uh. Uh hopefully with. I'm discussing with conservation uh because certainly this is going to require a little sub- intent.
Yes.
That would be, it's always helpful if the. If the Conservation Commission is in agreement with. The the limit of the of the wetlands as shown here and with the ultimate uh. Provision for storm drainage from the gravel drive.
We will definitely file a notice in time with the conservation concurrently with the planning board so that we're on the same page.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
With that, sorry, it's so late, eight thirty-eight. I apologize for the public hearing. We lasted a little longer than I thought, but a public hearing. Proposed, uh let me read the article in the newspaper, please. I need my other set of glasses. Hold on one second. Tough getting old. Notice of a Zoom public hearing, site plan review and solar special permit, five forty R Main Street, Acushnet, Mass. April twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, eight fifteen P M. Notice is hereby given that the Acushnet Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday. April twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at eight fifteen. P M via Zoom in accordance with Kushner bylaws, zoning article eight, sections three point four, three point five. In the Acushnet subdivision rules and regulations. Article three, section three, one, three, to process an application for site plan review. And special permit for solar array proposed by T J A Clean Energy. The energy, excuse me, the engineer is Atlantic Design Engineers. The planes are accompanying documentation are available for inspection at Town Clerk's Office by appointment only. Boddingway Building, one thirty Main Street, first floor. If you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself and. Tell us why you're here, sir.
Sure, um my name is Rich Tabazinski. I'm with Atlantic Design Engineers. And I uh represent T J A and a uh Clean Energy. Who are the developers of the solar facility that's being proposed at five forty R Main Street. Um I can describe the site. I can uh share a screen if you'd like.
If you would, please.
Uh probably, okay. Uh can everyone see these uh the site plans that I have up on the screen?
Yep. Yes.
Okay. Um very good. Yeah, I apologize. I don't have a camera on my uh desktop here, so I'm just. Calling in by phone, but being able to share the screen helps so you can see kind of what I'm talking about. Uh but the project is on a thirty-eight point nine acre piece of property uh for uh North Main Street. Um after Main Street and it it's outlined here on this aerial view, which uh is on a cover sheet of our site plans. Uh that's the total area is thirty-eight point nine acres, but the the solar facility itself that's being proposed is about twelve point nine acres and that's shown. Kind of in this light gray color on the um. Southwest portion of the property. Um the property is owned by uh Richard Metal and Guads. Uh it's also. The site of the Flying Cloud Orchards. Uh this area in the middle of the site is a cleared. Agricultural field, uh slightly old grown at this point in time, but as you can see, the remainder of the site is is fully. Fully vegetated. Um it's kind of a ridge running down the center of the site, which. So the portion of the property flows to the, you know, the pitches towards the. West and another portion of the site pitches towards the uh east. Um I'll go into the existing conditions plan, which. Shows. Then a little more detail with topography and um also, as you can see, there's a large wetland area on the eastern portion of the site. That's um um basically the to give you a little background on the wetlands um on the site, we've had a. Yeah, an Anrath approved by the Conservation Commission, which approved the location of wetland flagging. And we also had a um. Uh determination of applicability approved by the Conservation Commission. For the limited amount of work for this project, uh that's with that was within the buffer zone to these wetlands. So we feel we have um at this point in time Conservation Commission approval for for the work that's being proposed. On this pr- on this site. Um what we are working on still um I'll is related to the. Natural Heritage and and endangered species program um with the State Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. Uh this boundary line that I'm kind of highlighting right here. Represents an area that has been mapped. Um as a potent as potential species habitat for um. Uh endangered species. And so what we have to, we've had some conversations with. The Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. and have proposed uh uh our site plan to them and and working out details with them on what would they allow uh on this property, considering this, you know, potential habitat area. So there was a lot of back and forth with them over the last um several months and uh, you know, essentially, they have endorsed, uh endorsed the the project uh on an informal basis, I guess I should say. Uh, they have provided an email that basically told us that if we design according to this plan, that it is um something that they would consider approving. We don't have their approval yet, um, but we feel that we can get it based on our informal discussions with them. They as part of that process with the uh Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, what we've had to do was reserve a good portion of the property as open space. So I wanted to open up another uh plan to show you in front of you. Now you see a drawing that basically what shows what we're proposing of the thirty, thirty-nine acre site, we're proposing to permanently restrict almost twenty-four acres of it. This hatched area on the eastern edge and along the southern edge is going to be a the permanent conservation restriction, leaving the only developable area right in this location here. So this boundary was kind of worked out with the Natural Heritage uh program to preserve the wetlands and and boundaries surrounding the wetlands. Um, not break up uh and divide habitat areas. And so that isn't locked in stone yet, but it's pretty close to it. Uh, we have filings into the, into the Natural Heritage uh program to to get this approved. So based upon that boundary, that uh our development plan is uh is shown before you right now. And the project, uh, as I mentioned before, comprises about twelve point nine acres. And it's essentially on this western edge of the of the site. Um, again, dictated by what the conservation restriction area that the statewide in terms of the uh dangerous species there. So in terms of um the project, the uh the site plans show that we've met all the, we feel we've met all the requirements of 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 the bylaw. There's an an access drive proposed that's coming off of the existing driveway that's off of Main Street here, but we're just proposing to extend it directly up into the middle of the site. Uh, there'll be three pad sites for the electrical equipment transformers and and energy storage systems that are shown right here um in the middle of the property. And then we show a proposed panel layout. Um, now the panels that are being proposed in the is either going to be a fixed tilt system or a tracker system, uh depending on uh what the developers choose to uh to go with based on their um their energy modeling and and uh financials for the project. But basically, uh, the layout would be in in this twelve point nine acre fenced-in area. Um, and they, so we're proposing that um it either be a fixed, fixed mount or a tracking system in this area. It would be about five, a little over five megawatts DC and four point three megawatts AC. We'd be surrounded entirely by a seven foot, um, seven foot uh security fence with a gate at the entrance. The other aspect I wanted to highlight is the screening that's being proposed, um particularly along this west side of the project, um, which there's the budding houses along Main Street, uh and uh that we were proposing a a screening. Uh, show that in a little more detail here. Um, that screening would be comprised of uh be it'd be a twelve-foot strip that we propose a a varied species to be planted in of evergreens in that area. Um, we didn't want to just propose a just a straight row of uh arbor byde or some other screening method like that. We 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 have a detail that shows how it would be planted in a staggered pattern uh with a variety of species, of evergreen species, maybe six or seven variety of species along this stretch. So that wouldn't look just like a a hedge row. Um, feel it would have a little more character there. And also along this area here, which is kind of a wide open uh lawn area for this residence, um, uh, the the Bronco property, we're proposing that that the the fence have green vinyl slats uh to make a sol, a more of a solid uh fence in this area here as opposed to just the the standard chain link. Further to the to the south along these houses, there's some existing vegetation uh on the, at the back, at the rear of the properties that will remain there. And we would just be supplementing the screening along this edge for uh on those properties. Uh, stormwater uh for the site, and this is a good plan to look at. Basically, um, as I said, there's a the stormwater divide uh pretty much down the center of the project. And so we ran calculations on how much of this area here uh is draining towards the southwest uh under existing conditions. And then we we proposed a drainage system in this corner of the property to make sure that we weren't increasing any runoff onto the site. And so uh this basin is designed up, up to ten-year storm, there won't be any discharge from this basin at all. Um, under larger storm events, twenty-five year, hundred year storm, there will be some overflow of this basin. Um, but again, the rates uh of runoff that we have calculated show that there's the there will actually be a reduce over the amount of wat, uh reduction over the amount of water that's going on to the site right now. So we feel there's an improvement in that. Um, and I, and we know that uh S W Cole has reviewed this project and has some comments. Um, we have reviewed those comments. We feel we can address them, but at this point in time, we haven't revised the plan or addressed any of those comments yet. We wanted to get uh your input from, you know, from the planning board's input. We wanted to get any butter input first before we went ahead and started revising the plans, so. Um, but we do feel we should be able to address all of S W Cole's comments. Um, and that also applies to the comments from the fire department. Um, they, like other projects I've heard tonight, um previously, that they're requiring an access road around the around the project. Um, we will, we will, we will be able to provide that for them. Um, right now, we do have a fifteen-foot strip that runs around the perimeter of the site, but it is just grassed, uh not gravel uh or stone the way that they, um, the fire department requires. So we'll have to revise the plan to show that as gravel. That will have some effect on the stormwater. We'll have to rerun some calculations and redesign a few things at that point. But again, that's what we're, what we're planning on doing in the uh in the coming weeks after we get your department. So um, that's kind of where we stand at this, you know, at this point in time. And I would just open it up to any questions that the that the board might have.
This is a public hearing, so the way we do it is we ask the gentleman on the board if they have any questions. And then when they're all done, we ask the public if they have any questions. I will read a few things in here. Uh, we have a memo from the Board of Assessors because a portion of this land was on sixty-one A. Please be informed that the Board of Assessors at their meeting March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, recommended a three zero vote to forgive the right of refusal for leasing the fourteen point seven portion of the above described parcel. Thank you for your intention. Please contact this office with any questions. Also, the same thing for Richard and Madeline Gavush from the Board of Selectmen. Please be advised that the Board of Selectmen meeting on their March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one meeting voted not to exercise their right of refusal to lease the fourteen point seven acre portion of map eleven lot ten described as five forty R Main Street. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact us. Thank you for your attention. With that, gentlemen on the board, do you have any questions?
Um, what, on the, on the southwest corner of the site where that overflow is uh to adjacent property? South that that, where does the how does this, if there is an overflow, where does the water go from there? Not just where it leaves the property, but what is the is there some kind of wetland system down there? Is there any kind of of existing swale? Uh, is it, is it going to impact anybody's uh house or land uh on that southwest corner?
Um, but this plan, I think, shows the best uh view of it. Um, basically, there is a a channel that flows down to the south uh that avoids any of the adjacent houses or anything like that. Um, maybe the first sheet, I mean, go up to but basically down in this area here, there is a a channel that 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 all the runoff from the site goes down in this direction. Um, it doesn't go here towards these houses or anything like that. There's the topography that we have shows it going down in this direction off-site under present, you know, under the conditions right now. So even though the discharge is here, it's not like it's discharging and then just flowing out to this house or that house or any of these other properties. It goes into kind of a a natural area of topography that carries it round to the south here. Um, we can provide some better documentation of that uh to to you and to S W Cole to to clarify that.
I I think that would be a good idea because certainly the neighbors are going to be interested in in that particular situation.
Yep, understood. Yep, like, you know, some, you can see the channel a little bit right here on this plan. Um, but it's
It's at the beginning of it.
It's kind of cut off here, so we'll we'll provide some better information on that.
Okay, if you would go back to your, the plan that shows the array on the property?
Yep. Uh, okay, we grab it then.
You have it.
Yep.
There we go. Okay, now obviously, you know, you've got panels that are going right up to the edge of that detention on once you, once you put in the access road for the fire chief, those those panels would have to be revised. The location of those are going to have to be revised, so.
Uh, plus, yes, in this area here, yep.
And then I I've lost my north arrow here, but I believe it's on the the southeast corner of the site, that ninety-degree turn.
Right here?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I mean, they are going to need to get fire out. Just providing a fourteen or sixteen-foot wide way at a ninety-degree corner is not going to get, not going to be sufficient for their fire apparatus. I'm assuming uh that the chief will want to see that corner of those panels pulled back a little bit so he can get his equipment around there.
Yeah, that's kind of a tight turn there, yeah, ninety, ninety-degree turn like that, yep.
Yeah, I mean, I might make it in my my Toyota Tacoma, but uh the, in terms of a fire truck, I don't think they're going to be able to accomplish that. Um, now, the the existing, the existing vegetation on that part of the site, is that like an old orchard with a lot of overgrowth on it right now?
Yes.
Where the panels are going to be?
Yes, in this area here
Yep.
is a, an overgrown orchard, uh, I think it was used to be an old orchard, but right now it's just uh kind of like an overgrown hayfield.
Yeah, well, I guess it's either going to be a lot of trees that that have to be cut down and hauled offsite, a lot of uh excess material that's going to be uh chipped up and again transported offsite.
Um, there will be some, yes. Um, this is the aerial view again, and this part of the prop of the site has trees that will need to be brought off, you know, um, cut down and and we're not really proposing any grading or anything of the earth, but basically these trees will have to be
I'm assuming it'll still have to be stumped and 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 the trees
Yep.
chipped up and and at least it's right onto the Main Street, so that's not so much of a consideration as it has been on some of these other solar arrays that we've had or that we have under consideration right now. Now, I guess that's it, that's
Another thing
more comments right now.
Another thing that the fire department is also looking for is, is there a hydrant in the area or is, are they going to put in a water storage?
I believe there's a fire hydrant right on Main Street, Brian. Okay, has to be within a thousand, I believe the regulation the chief wanted was within a thousand feet. Is that right, Pat?
Well, in in any case, the the fire chief's going to have to look at it and decide whether he needs a
It's a thousand feet, yes.
Yeah.
He made that stipulation, if the fire hydrant's within a thousand feet, you don't have to put a cystic box in.
We'll get him that, those dimensions, but there is a fire hydrant out on uh Main Street in basically right in this location here, just a little bit north of the drive.
Yeah, no problem. Okay. Gentlemen of the board, any other questions?
No, um, any, any provision for uh any kind of swale or or storm stormwater uh control on the eastern side of of that array adjacent to the wetland?
Um, actually, no, it it turns out that in this area here, the this portion of the property that drains towards the wetland edge, we're essentially not changing, we're not cutting any trees down, we're not changing the cover of the land that's out there. We're basically just putting drilling posts in the ground and putting up the solar panels. So, you know, based on the D E P standards and runoff calculations, there was no need to put any stormwater measures uh along that edge. Um, we were able to, there there was no increase in stormwater runoff. There's no pervious area draining into this, into the, into the eastern portion of the site. So, um, and again, we weren't, we weren't clearing any trees uh in that area. So it it worked out very, or just a minimal, minimal amount of clearing in this particular area here, I can see. But it, that amount of clear, tree clearing did not disrupt the curve number uh of this portion, portion of the site, and therefore nor, no basin was required or no stormwater measures were required. Um, providing erosion control measures, but no um, no physical swales or basins or anything along that edge.
Okay. Uh, you said that there's the the western section of the site. There are some, so it's, that's heavily wooded. Now, the the other, but the the part that we're talking about right now, I mean, is it just grass? Is it a lot of brush? Are there old orchard trees there? You know, what what's, what's the composition of that? Uh, that section of the site in terms of existing cover?
It's uh just basically a hayfield.
Okay, it's
There's no trees, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we've got hay, sea, hayfield on the eastern side, and then you've got a wooded portion on the western side.
Yeah.
North and south, I I don't, I don't see the north there on yours.
North is up, uh directly up the
Yes, so the east is, the east is actually wooded. And the west is more the uh open.
Okay.
Gentlemen of the board, any more questions?
So.
One thing, if you would, reiterate, Rick, for the public, that uh the law in Massachusetts is we cannot refuse solar arrays the law in Massachusetts is we cannot refuse solar arrays. Is there a
Yeah, I mean, the solar, yeah, a solar array is, is allowed use, uh, in the state by, by state law. So, I mean, we can certainly condition approvals, but we can't just out and out say we can't have a solar array there. That's up to ever source to do that.
With that, gentlemen, any more questions from the board? With that, is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak for or against this array? Seeing there's no one for or against, is there a motion to continue this? To May twentieth at eight P M?
Okay, now, on the, Mark, on the, on the, uh, on the agenda, it says the applicant is seeking a public hearing. So do we have to, do we have to, this is just a
This is the pub, this is the public hearing.
This is the public hearing. Okay.
We had it in the paper. We had to put it in the paper two weeks ahead of time.
Okay.
Now, this will be a continuation of a public
Okay. Just it's confusing the way it goes on the agenda. That's, okay, I would make a motion that we continue this to May twentieth. At a time deemed appropriate by the chairman.
Eight o'clock.
I second that.
All in favor? Aye.
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 With that, sir, everything, all your paperwork has to be in the Friday before the meeting on the twentieth. Do you understand that, sir?
I do understand.
Thank you very
Very good. I appreciate everybody's time.
With that, eight thirty, how close are we? We're not dead for time. Nine o'clock, that's not too bad. In formal discussion with Zenith Consulting Engineers about Pembroke Ave and Bedford Street and, and Asbilly. Anybody from Zenith Consulting out there?
Good evening, gentlemen. John Romanelli with Zenith Lansbury here, helping out Jamie Bissonette tonight who couldn't make it. And I'm going to do a share screen with you right now. Everybody see that?
Not yet.
Here we go.
Okay.
Okay, if you do remember, I think it was last late last summer, early fall, we came before the board to do a, um, roadway improvement project. It's Bradford Street. I think in the, uh, notification it said Bedford Street. It's not Bedford, it's Bradford. Anyways, the De Terra brothers who own the property have constructed the new Bradford Way, private way, twenty foot of pavement, tape card berm on one side. Uh, just edge of pavement on one side. It's super elevated to pitch to one side to keep it away from the, uh, lots on the west side. Up and constructed at the end due to weather concerns. We recently did stake it out so they could start grubbing it and getting that developed. But at this point, the detention basin has not been constructed. But the water main was brought down, a six inch ducted lion water main was brought down, new hydrant, new water gates. And then there is a inch and a half PVC forced main sewer that's brought right down in the middle of the, uh, pavement strip. They've, uh, you can see we've got some, uh, water and sewer stubs here that have been brought to the edge of the lots for, uh, for the three lots that we did get approved last year. We had a, uh, the Terra brothers had a quick discussion with, uh, the building commissioner, Jim Merritt, and they are looking to get two of the three lots released. And Jim suggested doing that and holding, uh, the third lot ransom for the basin to be constructed. And at that point, then they, uh, would look for a release of the third lot. But at this point, they're looking to generate a little income and possibly, uh, sell off the first two lots on Bradford on the west side. So that's one item that we wanted to bring before the board. Um, I don't know if anybody has any questions at this point before I go any further.
Uh, is the, is the Department of Public Works satisfied with the construction of the road?
Yes, they are. Dan Menard was on site. Uh, I'm going to show you a quick picture of what it looks like if you're standing on Pembroke, looking down the new paved way. The lots will be on the right side of that photo. That's the actual patch of the, uh, forced main sewer coming into Pembroke. So I'm standing on the center line of Pembroke looking down Bradford.
Is that the, is that the finished course of pavement?
That is not the finished course.
Okay, so there's a finished course left to do and probably clean up the patch on, on Pembroke.
Yes.
The detention basin.
Correct.
Uh, is there anything else that is, needs to be done there?
Uh, just some little rip rap before it goes into the basin, that little, um, dumping ground at the end of that turnaround is, uh, the pavement is constructed, but there's a rip rap swale before it goes into the basin. That's not constructed yet either. But it looks pretty good. I drove it down there today and turned around. Uh, the hammerheads in, in good shape for, uh, emergency vehicle turnaround. Pretty straightforward, I think.
Well, this lot's worth. Any idea? I, I mean, we're, we're being asked to hold one, you know, in lieu of finishing up the construction. So I mean, that is, that is a consideration.
Yeah, I, I think they're anywhere between eighty and a hundred thousand per lot.
You're asking us to release two lots and keep one, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, if, if we release those two
We get to pick the lot?
If we, if we, if we release two lots, then, uh, if they don't finish it, we'll never approve another thing for the De Terra brothers. They do realize that, don't they?
I think they do.
I mean, that, that seems reasonable to me. I mean, if the, you've got a finished course of pavement, a little permanent patching to do on Pembroke, the, and the detention basin, uh, that, that last lot should it should be financial incentive to do the work to free up the last lot.
I agree.
That's it? Is there a motion? Do we get to pick the lot or they're going to pick the lot?
Uh, they would love you to pick the last lot on the right forty, eighty-one dash three, because that's right where the basin is going to be going in front of that.
All right, I'll make the, I make the motion that we release lot four eighty-one dash one and four eighty-one dash two as shown on the plan presented by Romanelli Associates.
Zenith Lansbury, sorry.
I'm sorry, Zenith Associates.
I second
Romanelli sold out, so we can
All in favor?
Aye.
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 With that, we will put that, we'll have to put that in writing. Then we'll release those two lots, keep the other lot till they finish everything else all up.
That would be great. They, they also wanted me to ask for, uh, a quick, quick, informal discussion about possibly getting the east, east of Lisa district, because right now it's, uh, it's conventional a lot, so they'd only be able to get one extra lot on the, uh, east side of Bradford. They're looking at different options of developing that, but I think, um, we've had some discussions with some of the, uh, selectmen in town. And they're really not, uh, crazy about any, uh, other development other than some residential lots in there. So they were, I had talked to Henry Young before he had, um, left the town about possibly getting that section of Bradford Street rezoned to village district. There is water and sewer that already goes past heading east. You can see the, uh, the sewer and water heads out towards this Hamlin Street, which is not constructed. And, uh, Dan and I didn't understand why it was, um, why they cut it short where water and sewer was available. And now, obviously, there's very new water and sewer available going down Bradford Street.
Where's the three hundred foot mark from Main Street? Do you know where that, and?
Yes, it runs right along this, uh, westerly boundary, right where I'm kind of bringing the cursor across it here. So the furnitures are those three new lots we just created. So they're looking to get possibility of three, possibly four on this side of, on the east side of Bradford Street, if we got it rezoned.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's one of those things that we really need to look at all of the property, because if we do it here, then
Yeah.
we may get asked, I don't really want to get into a deal where we're doing these piecemeal, like one, one group of properties at a time.
Understood.
Don't, I don't, I just, I don't have a feel for the, the whole area. And I, I mean, I would also like to get some idea how the selectmen feel about that. That also, I mean, water, if water and sewer is available, obviously, it's, it's probably a good place to put in small lots, but I think that's kind of an overall planning thing that, that needs to be looked at. Whether we want to increase the, that three hundred feet, not just there, but further up and down.
Further up.
It all depends on where the water and sewer is, correct?
Well, I mean, that's, that's part of it also, but I mean, you're it, it increases the value of the property significantly. Uh, not just of this piece, but once it's, once it gets done on this piece, if there are other people that are, like, I don't know what the magic number is here. A hundred, is that a hundred and, a hundred feet of frontage? Or a hundred and sixty? I can't read it.
Uh, one sixty.
What's sixty?
So really, we would be talking about, instead of having three hundred feet, uh, back from Main Street, so we'd be talking about five hundred feet back and to just do it in one little piece, you know, I, I don't know. I'm not saying it's, it's at all, but, um, I would have to, I would have to be convinced that maybe it should be a five hundred foot strip instead of a three hundred foot strip.
Care is, where, where would they start that? Would they petition the selectmen or how do you even go about rezoning a piece of property?
Question. Uh, certainly, I mean, the selectmen are going to put it on the warrant. So I, I would think you would start with the selectmen and they would refer it to the planning board.
Hey, Rick?
Oh, what, yes, Pat?
It could actually, um, it could go both ways. They could ask the selectmen to, um, submit a warrant article, or they could submit a citizen's petition and collect signatures to, um, change zoning at town meeting. That, that's how they would go about that.
Very good. Very good. I think we'll look into that.
You wouldn't be able to do it until next spring.
Right.
Yep.
Very good. I think that's, uh, that's all I have for this evening. I don't know if anybody's got any other questions, but.
Just put that terminology all together about the two lots and we keep one lot.
Okay.
Until all finished and we go from there, until they finish
You know, before we just let that one go totally marked, now, what, what would be, what would they be looking at to finish the road? I mean, I would hate to have that linger for five years. And then the project's not completed.
Why don't I reach out to the De Terra brothers and, and come up with a price? What is going to take to, to complete it?
Okay.
Including the, uh, construction of the detention basin.
Yeah, and see, see if you can get some kind of idea when they'd like to, uh, finish it and do that last lot. We've, we've had, we've had some of these things linger for five and ten years and I'm not anxious to do that again.
Understood.
Do you guys require a separate bond for the road?
No.
Some, on a subdivision, we usually keep lots.
Okay. We, we do bonds. So we would be able to release a lot, but not release the bond on the road. But maybe ask them for a bond on the road, Rick.
Yeah, I mean, bonds are, you, you've got to keep track of them, make sure they don't run out. Uh, they're, they, they can be a little bit of a nuisance. I'm, I'm more interested in just getting it finished in a, in a relatively short amount of time, like not five or ten years.
But with that, John, you want to get an estimate what it's going to cost to finish the road? And we'll move on from that point?
Yes, I will do that.
And, and if you can get a timeframe from me, too.
Sure.
I mean, with lumber going up every day, they better build the house quick or nobody will be able to afford it.
True.
You want to come back on the twentieth of May, John? Eight fifteen.
Sounds great.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
With that, it being nine nineteen, our eight forty-five meeting, Form A, seven and nine Kendrick Street. Kevin Murray, applicant, represented by David DeVigne, Schneider, DeVigne and Leoni, Matt Apoysitmas.
David, actually, it's, uh, it's Matt Leoni, yeah, if you can hear me. Um, yeah, here with Schneider, DeVigne and Leoni, uh, for the record, to represent, um, Kevin Murray with a lot line adjustment plan, uh, for his properties located at seven and nine Kendrick Street, seeking approval not required endorsement. And, uh, with your permission, I will, uh, bring up a copy of the plan. Yep, can you guys see that?
Yep.
Okay, um, the intent of the plan is to, uh, better balance the size of the two existing lots and to match the, uh, current occupation, um, of the two properties. Uh, seven Kendrick Street, um, is, uh, known as Lot ninety-nine A on, uh, accessory map eighteen. It currently has fifty feet of frontage on Kendrick Street and, uh, five thousand square feet of area. Nine Kendrick Street, uh, the lot to the north, um, known as Lot one hundred on accessory map eighteen, currently has a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage and, uh, twelve thousand five hundred square feet of area. Uh, the proposed lot line adjustment will move the, uh, northerly sideline, which exists here as a dashed line, as I have, uh, labeled as former line of division. Uh, we're going to move that line, uh, twenty-two feet over, uh, northerly towards, um, the existing dwelling and, and Lot nine, right along the existing stockade fence. If you guys can see that, um, we kind of cited the, the lot line right along that fence, which kind of divides the two properties now. Um, this will allow for the current paved driveway, um, and the, uh, new sewer line and existing grinder pump to all be located on, uh, the Lot ninety-nine A, as well as kind of just, just balance the, the site and make it more as it's being used today. Um, the resulting new Lot ninety-nine A will have seventy-two feet of frontage on Kendrick versus the fifty and a total area of seventy, uh, seven thousand two hundred square feet. And, uh, the resulting new Lot one hundred will have a hundred and three feet of frontage down from the, uh, the hundred and twenty-five on Kendrick Street and a total new area of ten thousand three hundred square feet. Uh, the current zoning requirements for Residence A is a minimum of a hundred and fifty, uh, feet of frontage and a minimum of sixty thousand square feet of area. Um, although we are doing this reduction to that lot and area in frontage, um, Kevin had gone before the Board of Appeals on February twenty-third uh, to get, um, approval of, of this, uh, um, of this, uh, lot line, uh, uh, change. There's, uh, really, that's really it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to, uh, to address them.
Was it approved?
Yes, it was. Yes, sorry, yes.
Well, the Board, the Board of Appeals said they didn't have to be there, but you guys wanted to move this lot line to make it legal, is that correct?
Yeah, the, the idea is here, we're just come for approval and that we can record the plan. The, uh, the seeking of the variance was more to, um, make sure that he, he had his, all his eyes dotted and T's crossed as far as any zoning issues that, that may come up.
Gentlemen?
I mean, I don't, there's no new, there's no new dwellings. It's really just an exchange between neighbors at this point.
That's correct. Uh, Kevin, Kevin owns both lots at the, at the moment. Um, and as you can see, the, the, the existing lot line is, is five feet off of, uh, the, the, uh, house number seven there. And, uh, this move, this shift of the twenty-two feet really kind of balances things out and, uh, makes it, makes it a much more, uh, more usable property.
I, I understand. I mean, you, you've still got twenty feet of, of side yard for the existing dwelling number nine, and of course, existing dwelling seven is going to get more of a side yard.
Sure.
It doesn't change any of the other setbacks. Uh, I mean, I would make a motion that we approve the plan and submitted.
You're a second?
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brian, all set, unanimous? I do have the my last, so I'll have to get to you guys. Let me know when you're I do have the my last, so I'll have to get to you guys. Let me know when you're around.
Well, you can, can you sign formates, Mark? Just yourself?
I don't think so.
I know you can't do subdivisions, but I thought we filed the document with, with land court and with the registry to allow you to, to sign the formates.
I saw for the formates, we could.
Okay, well, I'll say, how about, Pat, can you look into that?
Absolutely.
I think you're correct, but I'm not sure, Rick. I thought it was just payrolls and stuff, but.
No, I think it was for a format.
No, I think it was for formates also, Mark.
Okie doke. Well, I got the my last.
If it isn't, then, you know, I'll, you know, be glad.
Okay.
I'll let you know tomorrow.
No problem. With that being nine twenty-five, we go to Form A Mendel Road. Russ Dubois, applicant, represented by Schneider, DeVignan and Leoni, Matt Apoysit Mass. Are you for this one again to Matt?
I am, I am. And I'll, I'll bring up the plan for you.
I think I gave you copy, you guys copy these plans, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, again, for the record, Matt Leoni with Schneider, DeVignan and Leoni, this time to represent Russell Dubois with an A and R plan to reconfigure an existing retreat lot on Mendel Road. So this plan, this lot, excuse me, existed prior. I just brought up, switched my screen here, if you can see that. There was a plan approved by the planning board on this plan revised as of April eighth nineteen ninety-nine, which shows the existing lot nine that I have highlighted in pink there. That lot was, is there a lot that we're dealing with at this point? As you look on our plan, the bordering vegetated wetland line is, encompasses a, a good deal of the, of the lot. And what we were trying to do here is, is incorporate some additional upland area off of some additional land that Mr. Dubois owns, which is map nine lot eighteen A. And this parcel A here, and I'm going to switch again to another highlighted section. The pink is the original lot twenty-four A and that we showed on the Hennick Plan. And the intent here is to take a portion of map nine lot eighteen A, which I have highlighted in blue here as parcel A. What we're going to do with that is incorporate that into the existing retreat lot and have a, have a new lot, which is the one that's I have highlighted here in, in green. I guess, as I said, the, the intent is to, to incorporate the area showing as parcel A from the adjacent land. And this should create a compliant retreat lot under today's current zoning requirements. The resulting lot that I have shown here is lot one on, on our plan will have a contiguous upland area of over a hundred and twenty-three thousand square feet. The current zoning requirement for a retreat lot is sixty thousand square feet. The total lot area will be over two hundred and sixty-three thousand square feet. And the current zoning requirement is a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. The lot will maintain its existing forty feet of frontage on Mendel Road, which was, you know, depicted on the, the Hennick Plan and there has been no change to the frontage. And we will also, by eliminating the middle lot line here and incorporating the two pieces together, we will be, be able to maintain the minimum lot width of thirty-five feet throughout the, throughout the access portion of the lot. Also, the distance between the street frontage and the area in which the house will be sited will be approximately nine hundred feet. And that's well under the, the minimum of sixteen hundred square feet that the current requirements require. And that's basically it. It's, it's, it's taken a little bit of land from, from lot eighteen A off of map nine that Russell owns as a cranberry nominee trust and incorporating it into the land he owns individually, which is the lot twenty-four A. And the lot that was shown on the Hennick Plan to create one new retreat lot. If you guys have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to, to walk you through.
Gentlemen?
Nope, seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it really, it really does, Mark. I mean, it's, there's not too often we just get a proposal for a bigger lot. And I, I don't think that the, the remaining land is going to be impacted at all by that relatively small wedge that's taken out of the forty acres. I would make a motion that we approve the plan that's submitted.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 With that, we're looking to that lot and go from there.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
And with luck, we got one more. It being nine thirty, our nine fifteen appointment, proposed large scale solar installation at Robinson Road, Cushing's Assessors Map seven, lot seven. Robinson Road Solar LLC, applicant represented by SciTech Incorporated. The applicant is requesting a public hearing for special permit and site plan review. Do we have anybody? Steve, you must be out there for, oh, SciTech, or we have somebody else?
Yes, John Connell SciTech Engineering. Very good, Joe.
Very good.
Yeah, you had Steve earlier for two. May I share the screen?
You certainly may.
Now, I, Mark, is this, is this a public hearing or is this, are they requesting a public hearing?
You're requesting a public hearing. This is the application.
Yeah, once again, John Connell SciTech Engineering and that, this is for Robinson Road Solar. The plan set you see here, we have the locus. It's the open field on the southwest corner of Robinson Road, Route one oh five in Cushing Lane. That's the locus plan there. Existing conditions, it's assesses map lots, map seven lot seven, seven and a half acres. We've got a wetland to both the east and the west. You can see that along the property line to the west and then along Cushing Lane on the right here on the east of the side. There's the little, another locus plan. They can see its relation to Main Street as well. Here's our proposal here is a paved apron and gravel drive coming in off of Robinson Road. You can see the solar arrays. This is a one point three megawatt array here. The existing open field will ultimately be grassed. You can see the gravel drive that we, we provide here for access. Battery storage in this, in this area here, the cistern, twenty-five hundred gallon, the fire cistern. Landscaping to supplement, you know, the, the lack of, of any vegetation, especially out along Robinson Road. Yeah, it does involve a little bit of trimming back of the, the existing vegetation a- along the southerly and south westerly lines here. You'll see the proposed erosion control measures as well along that wetland. As far as drainage goes, actually also the entire site is, or the entire array would be fenced. This is a seven foot. It's actually a farm fence, seven foot high with gates, you know, for pedestrians, personnel gates, as well as vehicular gates, you know, for maintenance and access and in case of emergency. Stormwater in general, everything, the runoff from the site flows in a goes into the northeasterly direction and it all focuses at a point here to a twelve inch culvert that passes on the Cushing Lane and into a resource area to the west. Uh, to the east rather, I'm sorry. I think that's a, a, a good introduction. At least a, you know, a general introduction and, you know, I'd certainly attempt to answer any questions the board may have or any input that you may have for us.
Oh, I think you're going to have to, the chief wants a fourteen foot gravel all around the inside of the drive, inside of the fence line all the way around. Probably have to, going to put that on there.
Okay.
I suggest that you give S W Cole a call and have him review it when you come out to the public hearing. Gentlemen, can you think of anything else?
Well, I mean, typically, we're always, we're always looking at stormwater control. I mean, right now, there is none proposed. I guess it all just runs across Cushing Lane and off into the resource area. You know, they're, they're going to have to come up with some calculations that make S W Cole confident that that it's not going to be a, there's going to be no increase down there. You know, give them the, give them the, the letters from the, both the fire chief and the police chief. Police chief is going to be looking for a person that's going to be available to call if there's a problem out there. And as police are, they want somebody that they can call twenty-four hours a day if there is a problem during construction, later on, once the thing is up and in place.
Okay.
Now, it, it's just a field out there now, just grassed?
Correct. Yeah, I, I think they, he might hay that area. It's, it's, it's an open field now.
Yeah, okay. It's not, it's not brush and small trees.
No, that's, that's, it's right across from the Gwen Tower.
Yep.
Okay, yep.
Okay, with that, we will put you on as a public hearing, eight thirty on May twentieth. We'll have to get a couple of ads in the paper and you can give us a full blown presentation then.
Okay, I think you said May thirtieth.
I'm sorry, May twentieth.
May twentieth, yeah.
At eight thirty PM. I'm sorry, getting ahead of myself, but I wanted to leave.
No one will show up on May thirtieth. You'd be in trouble.
With that, we're all set. We got the stormwater review board regulations. We got to, took care of that, right, Pat?
Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, anything else?
Yeah, think of anything.
Nope.
With that, our next meeting will be on May, our next meeting will be May sixth for the warrants on town meeting and stormwater. And our next planning board meeting will be on the twentieth of May. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
At nine thirty-seven.